This regular meeting of the Independent School District 535 School Board is called to order at 5:31 PM on Tuesday, April 22nd, 2025, in Room 137 of the Edison Building. The Board acknowledges this site and all RPS sites are situated on the ancestral land of the Dakota People, and we honor the Dakota Nations and the sacred land of all Indigenous Peoples. Present at this meeting are School Board members, Superintendent Kent Pecel, a non-voting ex-officio member, and Assistant School Board Clerk, Ms. Anne Kramer. Ms. Kramer, would you please call the roll?
Director Barlow.
Here.
Treasurer.
Here.
Director McLaughlin.
Here.
Clerk Marvin.
Here.
Chair Nathan.
Here.
Director Whitehorn.
Here.
Vice Chair Workman. We heard you Julie, thank you.
At this time, we offer the opportunity to say the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item 2.1 is approval of the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda?
Move approval.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve the agenda. Board members, all of our votes tonight will have to be roll called because we have a board member attending virtually. So Ms. Kramer, will you please call the roll on approval of the agenda?
Director Barlow.
Aye.
Treasurer.
Aye.
Director McLaughlin.
Aye.
Clerk Marvin.
Here.
Aye.
Aye.
Director Whitehorn.
Aye.
Vice Chair Workman.
Aye.
The agenda has been approved. The agenda and documents for this meeting are available online at RochesterSchools.org/simply. Comments to the Board. It is important for the School Board to hear from our stakeholders regarding issues that impact our students, staff, families, and schools. We welcome communication via email, phone call, at our community engagement listening sessions and here during comments to the Board. The purpose of comments to the Board is to give community members an opportunity to provide input directly to the School Board about issues that fall within our authority. The Board and Superintendent do not respond directly to the speaker's comments during the meeting, but may follow up with the speaker if requested and appropriate. Persons who want to make comments to the Board must fill out the online form by 5:00 PM on the Monday before the School Board meeting. The form is available on the RPS website and on the Simply main page. A reminder that Policy 206 and Procedure 206A set the time, place, and manner procedures and restrictions on comments to the Board. By participating in the public comment period, each speaker agrees to abide by this comment procedure. Speakers, when your name is called, please come to this table. If you have written materials for the Board, please provide them to the Assistant School Board Clerk prior to your remarks, and she will distribute them to board members. Choose a microphone to speak into and be seated. Please direct your remarks to the School Board. You will have three minutes to speak, and the timer will be displayed in front of me. Please begin your remarks by stating your name. Our first speaker tonight is Joanne Barkmire. Item 4.1, Information and Outreach, is National School Bus Driver Appreciation Day. Today is School Bus Driver Appreciation Day, and the purpose of the day is to recognize school bus and our van drivers for their efforts to go above and beyond in order to transport students to school every day. Here in Rochester, our bus and van drivers ensure the safety and well-being of our students while transporting them to and from school. Every day, our drivers transport over 10,000 students on yellow buses and almost 900 students on vans across over 13,000 miles of daily routes. The 260 bus and van drivers that transport RPS students are the first people to greet many of our students in the morning and the last to say goodbye each afternoon, which significantly impacts all of those students every day. We thank these essential members of our Rochester Public Schools community for supporting the safety and sense of belonging for our students. And just a reminder, we are still facing a shortage of bus and van drivers, and first student is hiring, so you can view the opportunities at workatfirst.com. Administrative Professionals Day is tomorrow, April 23rd. Our receptionist secretaries, administrative coordinators, and office managers do an exceptional job and work hard to keep our schools and offices organized and running efficiently. They are the frontline of welcoming families and students to our buildings and offices, and often the first stop for addressing an issue. We are grateful for their friendly and professional presence. Please join us in thanking them the next time you call, email, or visit a school or district building or program. Our next information and outreach item, 4.2, is Activities Update, Century Chess Champions. Superintendent Pecel.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It is a pleasure to ask Chuck Hanlon and some of our Century High School state champion chess tournament winners to come on up to give us a brief overview of the incredible victory that they achieved and the great work that they've been doing. So, great to see you Chuck, great to see you guys. Want you to take a seat. Board members, we are going to be trying to, every board meeting from this point on, recognize some type of student accomplishment. Sometimes they will be athletic, sometimes they'll be academic, sometimes they'll be artistic, sometimes they'll be none of the above. And so, tonight is one of the first in that series, and so it's great to begin with all of you. And so, thank you. Let us know what happened, the state tournament.
Well, I'm Chuck Wheeler Hanlon, and I've coached the Century Chess team for 25 years. And I'm sorry to say that two members are playing tennis, but I'll talk about them later. But these gentlemen would probably be more comfortable behind a chessboard with 30 seconds left on their clock than they are right now. But I'm going to let each of them just introduce themselves and say a little bit. To my right is our captain, so we'll start, and you can introduce yourselves and say a little bit about what the experience was for you.
Hi, I'm Cole Lappi. I'm the captain, as he said before. This is my third year here at the Century Chess team. It's been a pretty great experience. As you could imagine, it's a little stressful, sophomore, wrangling a bunch of freshmen. We have a young team this year, but we've done amazing, and I'm hopeful for the future. We have so many great years ahead of us, our team's only going to get better.
Hi, I'm Calder Winn, and I've been on this team for around, say, two years. And I think it's been a great experience, just everyone's always been nice, per se. And I think my friend Cole over here, great captain, but I'm sorry he has to deal with all of us.
Tell them what place you were in the tournament.
Oh, in the state tournament? I'm, if I can recall correctly, I'm pretty sure I got 11th place.
Yeah, 11th out of probably 125 students? Okay.
Hello, I'm Andrew Merkel, and I've been with the chess team for, I think, one year now, I'm a freshman.
Well, with the varsity, but he plays junior varsity.
Yeah, true. Chess has always been great for me because I've just been able to connect with so many people, and being on this team, we go to so many different tournaments, and you just meet a lot of people, you're able to exercise your intellect, and overall, just be able to be good at games that you like to play, such as chess.
So, the two members that are not here right now, both were, got trophies in their divisions. So in the United States Chess Federation, you have a rating, and when you start, your ratings probably are about 500, and if you're in the 2000s, you're a master or grandmaster. So in the under 1200 grouping, one of our freshmen, Johan Meiberg, placed first, and his colleague, Josh, Joshua Wang, was second. So, as Cole mentioned, we have, we had four freshmen, and I had no idea what their ceiling would be, because in the previous year, they were in the junior high tournament, but now they'd be playing against the big boys. And they were hyper-focused. To give you a little idea of what this is like, it's a two-day tournament, and they play four games the first day. Now, each player has an hour to make their moves, and it's not uncommon for a game to go two hours or more. So they put in about 10 hours of chess for some of them on that first day, and you would think they were wiped out, but when I took them to McDonald's, no, they were not wiped out. They were still ready to go. And then the next day, they had three rounds, so they played seven rounds, and, you know, I've always told the team, if you get four out of seven, that's above 500, you know, that's a pretty good score. But we had three players get five out of seven, and two of them were freshmen. Six out of seven, you're in the, you're one of the co-champions probably. So, just their first year, they did just an incredible job. They were super focused. We went into the last round with three teams. Well, there were actually five that were within a point of each other. You get a point for a win and a half point for a draw, so you could get, if, seven, if, and they count the scores of the top four on your team. So you could get 28 theoretical points, but there were like four teams that was very bunched up, and it was anybody's chance to take it. I knew we needed two points, and we got that from the round, and were able to tie with two other teams. It was pretty amazing that they outdid last year's team, which took second. So, one of the things I want to mention is there were other successes for Rochester Public Schools students. I'm just going to mention that 8th grader Luke Sellen was able to place eighth in the junior high tournament, and then a Mayo High School senior, Isaac An, placed fourth, and he was in the playoff for the national, the champion for the state that would go to the national tournament. So in the 25 years, we've had a Rochester team that's been in the top 10 or top 5, in the top 10 every year, and in the top 5 for like 12 out of those 25 years. And why is that? It's because of the Rochester Chess Club, a nonprofit, that we work together, they host tournaments, they funded students to go to state, they've written grants for the schools to take teams like the English speakers, other languages in the years past. We work collaboratively. No other sport does that. You don't have all the hockey coaches working together to improve each other, and it doesn't matter which team you're on. We help each other when we go to state. We have one team for, one room for all the Rochester parents, players, everybody, and every coach is willing to do an analysis of a player's game. So, these guys are hungry. In fact, I'm taking them to a tournament in Wisconsin on Saturday, which there will be some cash prizes, I've told them what my percentage is. But with the NIL, we don't have to worry about them losing any eligibility. Before we finish here, Cole would like to, on behalf of the team, do a little presentation here.
Yeah, to thank you for your support, I wanted to offer this shirt to.
I'm cool, finally.
Show the back, because we want you to know the Panthers got your back.
You move, we pounce. That is so awesome.
Thank you so much for your support.
Madam Chair.
Director Barlow.
I wanted to acknowledge Chuck, you know, retired school teacher. Your continued commitment to our students is a true blessing, and I hope the team members recognize Mr. Hanlon is doing this, you know, out of his love for the game, and I think the future that he sees in you, and I just encourage you to strive to do your best.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Congratulations.
If anybody's watching and has young chess players, having had two chess players be coached by Mr. Hanlon and had a lifelong impact on their academics, their approach to life, I suggest you get your kid involved in chess. Get them to learn, it's a great sport. I think these guys can vouch for how exciting it is, and it's not just, it looks like an isolating game because it's just you and someone else, but I've seen the camaraderie on these chess teams and how they support each other, and it's just a really wonderful opportunity that we offer our kids. So thank you Chuck, and to all the other coaches who have kept it going for all these years.
Yeah, thank you. There, I mentioned the Rochester Chess Club, they meet every Tuesday evening at the Mayo Harwood Building, and they'll take six-year-olds and work with them if they want to learn the game of chess. Community ad runs some things as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
So our next item is 4.3, Board Member Updates. Any board member have updates from their committees since the last meeting or any other information to share? Oh, Clerk Marvin.
Surprise. At this time, I'd like to invite Cypress, who is a member of Rochester Public Schools' Student School Board, to the table up here. Last Wednesday, Cypress and four other students, School Board members, attended the Minnesota Attendance Conveting at the Minnesota Department of Education building. The focus of that conference was to learn about and to share some of the challenges and possible solutions to the absenteeism rate that's common throughout the K-12 schools in Minnesota, and really throughout the nation. Rochester was asked to send a panel of students to attend and to provide a presentation about their perception in terms of chronic absenteeism. Lieutenant Governor Peggy Flanagan facilitated a discussion before the panel among the adults there about why their schools were seeing so many kids were absent chronically. And it was interesting that across the state, in rural areas and bigger cities, it was sort of the same kind of message. They said that kids were not coming to school because of transportation problems or because of the physical or emotional challenges. Some of the students didn't see that any positive outcome would result from an education. They said that schools weren't welcoming or classes weren't relevant, and they said that they had fallen so far behind, they needed support, and they just felt helpless. And we heard this again and again and again. Now, we know that when we talk about students and the challenges they face and what some solutions might be, we had better listen to students, and not just listen to them, but really act on what they're saying. The audience there was riveted to what our students had to tell them, and they gave them a lot of information. Our students are thoughtful, they are profound, they are eloquent, and they have done a lot of listening to students in their high schools, so they represented, I think, our district well. Cypress is one of the five who attended, and Cypress, I'd like you to introduce yourself, where you go to school, what grade you're in, and then talk a little bit about the panel that you were part of. Oh, and I should say. Oh, and I should say too, sorry, I asked you to do that, and then I interrupted you. You had that experience before. Will Ruffin and Sarah Louise Henry were vitally influential in getting this group together and getting them transported. And both of them, and along with me, were able to witness what a great job our students did. Go ahead.
Hello, my name is Cypress Putzivong. I am a senior at Mayo High School. And I would like to speak about the student panel that we attended, I'd say, last week or two weeks ago. And I'm one of the five students, and I would like to name them out. I'm Cypress Putzivong. There was Caterina, Julia, Caterina who's a senior, Julie's a senior, Julu from Century who's a senior. And I hope I don't butcher it, Yan.
Ayen.
Ayen, from Century, who was a sophomore. And we learned from this meeting that one of the biggest reasons why students won't attend school, like absenteeism, is the lack of connection that they feel. And so, when we of Mayo High School, or RPS, we mentioned the TOPS Room, which is located in Mayo High School. And that is, is a program that is about peers supporting each other, having someone to speak to when you need help, and you just, just always having someone to reach out to. And it helps allow the connection. Me, I am a peer supporter at, in the TOPS Room, which stands for Teens Offer Peer Support. And daily, I help students who walk in, asking them, "How was your day? How are you doing? Would you like to speak?" And I wouldn't say all the time they, they would say no, because they like to hide that in. But every once in a while, I'll get one student that likes to express themselves and let that weight off their chest. And I learned from, I don't really know anything about what, how it affects them, but I learned from one student who came to me the next day and said, "Thank you a lot for letting me speak to you about these things." And they seem to do way better now at school. So, I feel it does, it has had a big impact on the school system, or schools. And speaking of school system, Century and JM have now tried to incorporate their own mental health, you know, mental health programs, just like for Mayo. And, sorry. I, I feel that this program is actually very helpful. And speaking of, who liked, liked the program was Peggy Flanagan herself, the Lieutenant Governor. She expressed that she wants to know more about the program and even visit Mayo High School herself. And so, the Student School Board, we have made a draft of a letter to send to her as an invitation to our school. And so, I feel that we have just kind of came up, you know, from, like, we've really done something in this program and in this club. And I would like to speak about how this has affected me. Starting freshman year, I didn't think I would be doing anything this big in my high school, high school years. And joining the TOPS Room actually was the reason why I'm here. And so, I thank Amanda Burgett, who is the, the runner of the TOPS Room at Mayo High School. And with how much it's affected me is, one day, I was called to the principal's office asking if I could attend a Student School Board meeting, which was to promote the TOPS Room. And, and ever since then, I've been attending every single meeting. And that student panel was probably like the biggest thing that has ever happened to me in high school. And I'm like really out of myself and glad. And I thank all of you for having me here, for, to speak on behalf of the Student School Board.
Thank you, Cypress. And, and let me say, we're really proud of you too. And the thing, one of the things that you all, the five of you talked about was how the TOPS Room was working for students who had some emotional issues. But it could absolutely be the kind of place where upperclassmen could tutor students who were struggling, any student who was struggling academically, and be there for them the same way the TOPS Room works. Perhaps they could get some sort of credit. And that was what Lieutenant Governor Flanagan picked up on. And she wants to come and see how that works, and how it could extend to helping kids with, who need academic support too.
Can I still speak? Actually, of that, what you were talking about, the student tutoring, there are some students at, in the TOPS Room that like to kind of have, they, they kind of make their own, like, almost like a, it's not a therapist, but like, they have like, they actually do make connections. I've seen it in like real time at, in the room, as these students coming in, asking for a peer supporter, like, like, and whenever I see that, it's like, I, it makes me really happy, is how this room actually does help with connections.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Any other updates from any other committees, board members? Here, oh, Director McLaughlin.
I attended the Community Curriculum and Instruction Advisory Committee last week, which one of our speakers spoke about as well. And it's a fairly new committee to me, so I'm still kind of learning the ropes and how that committee works. But it's a, I think we meet quarterly. And this quarter, we had, first, we had an update from the Elementary Literacy website that parents can access to get supports for parents who want to help their children with the new Wit and Wisdom curriculum. And a lot of really good resources on there, from eBooks to printable worksheets that students can work on at home. So, want to get the word out about that as much as I can. And then we also shifted then to a town hall format, where parents were engaged with the various areas of early education, elementary, secondary, advanced learning, and the graduate profile, to provide some feedback on those programs from the parents. And, you know, just learning from the parents about their experiences, so that we can improve the curriculum and instruction. So, looking forward to more work with that committee.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
If I could ask Director McLaughlin a question regarding the committee. As we heard earlier from one of our parents, and she echoes the need for parent parental awareness and involvement, is there a link or can you suggest how a parent could maybe obtain more information about the CCIC?
The, what I can tell you is that I actually saw a post about the meeting on Facebook on the district website. So, I know that it's being promoted there. It gives the date and time and location. That I would suggest reaching out to Heather Wellman, the Secondary Director of Curriculum. And they had a, you can sign up to be on the committee and attend. So, I know that they're, you know, taking names and contact information. So, I think that's the place to start.
And it's open to all parents?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, that's important, because sometimes parents either feel they're unaware or not invited to be a part of.
Right.
And thanks for bringing that to our attention.
Sure. And Dr. Marvin's a member as well. Did you want to add something?
No, just that it's open to the community. And we get grandparents, we get parents, we get people who are expecting children, we get staff. And it's a good opportunity for people to learn a little bit, and then also to let the curriculum instruction folks know what they're thinking, what questions they have, what needs, need to be addressed. I don't think we're ever going to get good enough at communicating everything and all the opportunities for people to come and let us know what, what they want to say. So, I think we need to keep focused on that. But this is one really important committee. And you don't have to be on the committee, you just have to show up and talk, listen.
And I really appreciate that they include all different areas of students, including the earliest learners in their early education programs, because I think that that's a way for parents to start getting involved when their children are really young, and hopefully continue to be that way as their kids go through RPS.
And do we know what the next date of the CCIC meeting is?
I think this was the last one for the year. Yeah, this was the last one for the year.
So, in the fall, parents can watch for that kind of communication.
Absolutely.
For it to start up again.
Right.
All right. Anything else, board members? All right, we'll move on to our consent agenda. Items 5.1 through 5.12 are on the consent agenda for consideration. Would any board member like any item removed for separate consideration? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Ms. Kramer, will you please call the roll for the vote on the consent agenda?
Hi, Director Cook?
Aye.
Director Marvin?
Aye.
Director Workman? She said. Hi, there we go. Chair Nathan?
Aye.
Director McLaughlin?
Aye.
Director Marvin?
Aye.
Director Whitman?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, the consent agenda has been approved. Our next item is 6.1 Focus Topic, Housing Stability Initiatives Update. Superintendent Pekel.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to ask Lita Casper, our Coordinator of Community Partnerships, and her team to come on up to get in places, so we can move forward. I'll let the team introduce themselves, as you take a seat up here at the table. It's common sense, and there's a ton of research behind the fact that kids who are experiencing housing instability face perhaps one of the greatest obstacles to academic success. Obviously, solving the problem of housing instability lies far beyond the walls of Rochester Public Schools. And so, it's work that inherently has to take place through partnerships. But partnerships don't happen, as has been noted tonight, by magic and without effort. And so, this work is a lot about bringing resources across our community together to support families who, for many complex reasons, find themselves living in circumstances where they lack stable housing. And so, I want to thank Lita for her leadership in moving this forward. She works closely with Amy Icke in our Office of Community Partnerships and Engagement. And I know this is a subject of great interest to many board members and community members in a community where housing is a hot topic, for good reason. And so, Lita, I'll turn it over to you, and thank you all for the work that you do. This has been a subject that we've been working on since I've been in Rochester and long before that. But I believe this is one of the first in-depth presentations we've given to the school board. So, it's long overdue.
Thank you, Dr. Pekel. Thank you, Chair Nathan, members of the board, and the cabinet, Ms. Kramer. I am really grateful to be here today, and I'm really thankful that you gave us the opportunity to, to share a little bit about the really innovative and interesting work that we're doing here. I'm going to allow my colleagues here to introduce themselves and share what they do for, for, for work.
Thank you for having us here this evening. My name is Nicole Webstead, and I'm the McKinny Vento Liaison, or Point of Contact for students and families experiencing homelessness within Rochester Public Schools.
Good evening, I am Shay Nichols. I am the Eviction Prevention Specialist, Point of Contact for Rochester Public Schools.
Good evening, my name is Mary O'Neil, and I'm the Associate Director of the Housing Department with Olmsted County.
Thank you. We are really excited that we get to share with you some of this innovative and really interesting work that's taking place here in Rochester. And we really do believe that it's innovative across, across the state and really across the country. Focused on solutions to really complex challenges, youth and family homelessness. This work would not be possible without the strong leadership and the intentionality of multiple entities, including Olmsted County and Rochester Public Schools. So, I want to just take a moment to thank some of our leaders who, who really do support this work, Amy Icke. And I see we have Dave Dunn, who has also joined us. And Dave Dunn is Olmsted County's Planning and Housing Director. And so, you can see physically here the support and the collaborative work that, that, that exists. So, thank you. So, our presentation goal, we're really just trying to build a shared understanding of what we are all doing together to, to ensure that, like Dr. Pekel said, that, that students experiencing homelessness have their basic human needs met, so that they can access their education every single day. As I mentioned, we don't do this work in isolation. None of us can solve youth and family homelessness alone. And so, we are really grateful to get to work with our strong community partners. You see the logos here. We just, we couldn't do it alone. Just for some interesting historical context, in 2019, Three Rivers Community Action, Olmsted County, Rochester Public Schools partnered together to, around a grant called Homework Starts With Home. And at that time, we had piloted this opportunity within a few different Rochester Public Schools, elementary schools at that time. They were primarily our community schools, where we had onsite housing navigational expertise through this grant located in our schools. And we saw some real success with that model. And just from my experience being at Riverside at the time, it was wonderful to be able to refer a family who was experiencing homelessness directly to a person who could, who could really help them navigate a really complex challenge that certainly our school social workers don't have the expertise and the capacity to do from, from their lens. And so, we expanded the model, and so, that's kind of how we're here today. Certainly, we've made some, some significant changes to the model, and we continue to focus on continuous improvement. But just so you're aware, this is where this kind of began. And so, I'm going to turn this over to Nicole, who is our, our homeless liaison here in Rochester Public Schools. She's just going to share a little bit about our team and our structure.
So, you can see the photos of the members of our team that meet twice weekly, that are on our collaborative, including Olmsted County and Three Rivers, Goodwill Easter Seals, AmeriCorps, and Rochester Public Schools. We do deep work together. We certainly don't just meet twice per week, we're messaging throughout the week. We certainly also have not solved all of the concerns of housing in Rochester, and you're going to hear about the gaps and things that are still needed yet in our presentation tonight. But as Lita shared, this team has grown and expanded over the last two years, and we're thankful to have a group that meets and works well together and is closely embedded with one another. So, part of our work, and if you've ever been involved in a collaborative with different organizations coming together, you know, it can sometimes be a little tricky to navigate too, with different federal definitions, different dollars received, different grant requirements that we receive. Something to just note is that even the definition of homelessness differs depending on which federal organization you are referencing. According to McKinny Vento statute, or educationally, it's lacking a fixed, regular, adequate nighttime residence. And as you'll see on upcoming slides, that means it includes things like families that are living together, not by choice, and they're doubled up because they have to be. There's a different definition that is offered by HUD. And I'll let Mary share that as well.
HUD is an acronym for the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development. And the HUD definition is literal homelessness, imminent risk of homelessness, or other situations like fleeing domestic violence. HUD has made the decision to focus on those and target their funding for those who are most in need, and people who are literally homeless, which would be defined as families that are in shelter, or are living in their cars, or a shed, or other places that are not meant for human habitation. So, that is the difference between the educational definition and the HUD definition.
So, you'll see that some common situations that our families experience under that educational definition of homelessness, under McKinny Vento law, are that they're doubled up in shelters, hotels, motels, unsheltered. Oftentimes, unsheltered will mean living in a vehicle. Sometimes, it can mean literal homelessness. And our most common scenario for families that we're working with is that they're doubled up with family or friends. But certainly, and unfortunately, we have families that are experiencing all of those scenarios at any given time during the school year. When we think about what leads to family homelessness, there can be a lot of stereotypes or stigma around. When we think about what leads to family homelessness, there can be a lot of stereotypes or stigma around that. Or common perceptions by the community could be that, oh, that's an individual problem or an individual factor. It's regarding someone's mental health concerns. It's regarding substance use concerns. But what we'd like to take a moment to clarify, and I'll let you read for yourselves, some composite situations of families that we have worked with and assisted this year, typical situations. Please note that 81% of RPS families experiencing homelessness do have household income. And so we're just looking to also combat some of the stereotypes and perceptions that may exist as well in terms of who we're serving.
So you may ask, where are these families staying when experiencing homelessness? And so we do a point, each year we do a community point in time where, at some point, we pull numbers. And in January, this is what we got. One family was facing eviction. Nineteen families lived in hotels. Nine students lived in a youth shelter. Five families lived in the women's shelter. One family lived in inadequate conditions. So that could have been shed, campground. One family lived in a vehicle. Ninety-five families were doubled up with families or friends, and 65 families have been housed since being homeless. So how does homelessness affect a child's education? Chronic absenteeism, academic challenges, graduation rates are low, educational instability and mobility, social, emotional challenges, and a lot of students feel shame and stigma. It was identified that RPS students, there was ninth grade, there was 41% of ninth graders who experienced a decrease in the odds of graduating high school than their housed peers.
This is some recent statewide data that was put together by the Department of, the Minnesota Department of Education, and anecdotally, we see similar trends in Rochester. Obviously, you see the disproportionate impacts, but for us, this really promotes the urgency as educators. And the other piece to this is it's part of this, the why our collaboration is not only necessary, but really, really critical in solving these complex challenges. Okay, so this is very, this is a very, it's a very busy slide. So I'll try to take a minute to just share a little bit about what we're doing to help and how we collaborate. You've seen MTSS and some of our, in some of Rochester Public Schools, work around literacy specifically. But it's also, it began as a public health model, and so the intention of it is really to serve an entire population of people. What I like about this graphic is that it really shows how we work together. It identifies sort of where our roles are, where each of our organizations sort of fit in this multi-tiered system of support. And it also allows us to identify where gaps are. And so I won't go into the gaps necessarily right now, but we can perhaps save that for questions. You might wonder how a family would be, how a family would enter into this multi-tiered system of supports. I say this all the time, but our schools are our community's most trusted resources. Our schools are oftentimes the very first places that a family member or a student will share that they are experiencing homelessness. And so Nicole has done an incredible job of ensuring that each of our schools have a key point of contact, which you'll see in that tier, in that tier-one area. And so what she, what will happen is a school, a student or a family might report homelessness. They report it to their school social worker. Their school social worker will fill out a referral. Nicole and Connie will get that referral, or Shay potentially. And they will call and try to better understand what the family is experiencing, experiencing, and understand the barriers. Sometimes that might just look like working with some of those tier-one supports, right? School stability, transportation, community resource and referrals. But sometimes it could, it could require a little bit more intentional and targeted support services or intensive support services. In which case, at our collaborative triage meetings, Nicole might bring that, bring up a situation and try to figure out how to best serve a family based on the barriers that they have. And so that's really the nature of this collaborative work and how we are working together to solve these incredibly complex community challenges and ensuring that we are promoting educational stability while also promoting housing stability.
I'd like to provide a little bit of context in terms of how and where the funding comes from. So Local Homeless Prevention Aid was legislation that was passed in 2021, and funding started in 2023. It is guaranteed through 2028. And these are the amounts of funding that Olmsted County has received. The unique thing about Local Homeless Prevention Aid is that it's a direct allocation to counties based on population and student data that actually RPS and other school districts within Olmsted County reports to the state each year. So this number does vary. But if anybody knows anything about government funding, direct allocations are pretty rare. We oftentimes have to apply for grants, so this has been really such a unique way to provide funding and resources to counties. The other nice thing about it is there wasn't a lot of detail and expectations around the use of the funds. It's pretty broad in how we can use it. We do need to target families with school-aged children, hence the relationship with RPS. And we must provide rental assistance or case management services, and we do provide both. So our two Hope Navigators, soon to be third, we just hired a third, will be joining the team. So they provide case management services for that top tier that Lita had just discussed. And then we also provide some rental assistance. We're also able to fund some hotels for those who need shelter. We have contracted with Goodwill Easter Seals to provide a career navigator that's also embedded within our team. It's a quick access to employment, to an employment resource who can really help them engage with employers, navigate some of the challenges that people have as they start to get back into employment and the workforce and to increase their income. So the funding has been extraordinary, and like I say, a lot of flexibility within how we can use this funding.
In terms of how Rochester Public Schools funds the positions that are, that work within the system, we have funding under the McKinny-Vento homeless grant, and we are one of seven across the state that get this formula grant. We also have funding within our Title I grant. And so within the Title I grant, there are multiple set-asides. Included in those required set-asides is the homeless set-aside. And so we're funding our McKinny-Vento liaison out of that, and then we fund our McKinny-Vento Navigator out of that. Fascinatingly, this is kind of where the, where the, where this collaboration sort of expands and where we get to get excited about the work that Shay is doing. Through this collaborative, we were able to lean into some publicly available data, some publicly available eviction data. And so over the course of one year, we checked that public eviction data against some of the, some of our data systems to just figure out like how many students and families are actually getting evicted a year. And what we determined was from December 22 to December 23, that roughly 452 students were likely evicted, totaling about 211 families from Rochester Public Schools. And so from that, we started to ask ourselves, what if we were able to use some of our homeless set-aside to fund an eviction prevention specialist, to fund this opportunity to, not only, under the McKinny-Vento law, we are required to identify families. And so using this really unique set of data to identify families who potentially were being evicted. And so that's how, that's how this, this sort of dream came about. I remember asking Mary, what if we could prevent like 20% of these evictions? Like what would that do for kids and families? The ability to stay in their school, the ability to stay in their home, the ability to have their basic human needs met so that they can access their education to the fullest extent. And here we are today. We have, we have, we fund the eviction prevention specialists, but then we utilize all of these community resources that you'll notice below. For example, Local Homeless Prevention Aid, Salvation Army, we work with Legal Assistance of Olmsted County, Acts for Kids, Diversion Funds with Family Promise. There are others as well, but just a really interesting dynamic opportunity. And we have this in a later slide, but I can't help but share. Shay has been able to prevent, based on our last count, 90 out of 96 evictions for students and families in Rochester Public Schools. So I'm just going to give her a little cut. And what that means is that kids and families are safe and stable and can continue to access their education at high levels.
Can I just add? With the numbers that were found, the 211 families from Rochester Public Schools, as of Monday, we are at 180 students for Rochester Public Schools. That means that there's about seven months left. That's almost, that's over half of that number. And so to be in this position, I'm truly humbled to be able to work with families in making sure that we can try to save their housing because the numbers, I mean, they just don't lie.
So as Lita just said, Shay has worked with Legal Assistance of Olmsted County and their eviction clinic and the families to prevent 90 evictions out of 94, only since October 1st. So that is rather a huge impact. Going back a little bit, looking at some data, our Hope Navigators have housed 65 families from July 24 to January of 2025. We have, as I said earlier, a lack of shelter for families in our communities, so we have been utilizing some of our funds for hotel stays for families. So in '23, we helped 28 families and then 40 families in 2024, and all of them secured permanent housing after being in shelter. We also have provided some assistance to our Family Support and Assistance Team Department at Olmsted County. So we are able to provide additional assistance above the emergency assistance they receive through the state. And you can see how many households we assisted with that funding as well.
We might have taken over our 15 minutes, but thank you for taking the time. Any questions? Director Barlow?
Sure, I'll go ahead and start it off. First of all, I was very impressed with the presentation as I viewed it. Thank you so much for including the link to the NPR article interview that they did with Shay. And I listened and read with great interest. I didn't realize, as I'm sure others may not as well, fully understand that many of these families are working full-time. It's not that they're just hanging out and, you know, doing nothing. They're doing their best. Even the one person in the NPR, she was working, she was housed, but was looming eviction. And what a blessing for you to be able to step in and enter seed. My question, I saw the reference or use of the term permanent housing. Now, in my mind, I thought, well, is that housing ownership, or can you define permanent housing?
We would, we would define permanent housing as a family having their own name on a lease. That would be one, but that they're not doubled up or they're not sharing housing with another individual or family.
Okay, and thank you. I just wanted to clarify that in my own mind. And so 387 students as of March 2025. What can we do to increase, if you will, the successes you guys are able to bring about? And I use the term "we" and I expand it beyond the collaboration of the county, Three Rivers, and RPS and the other Goodwill, the other organizations. Are there other opportunities for community organizations, nonprofits to, if you will, come alongside of? Or perhaps as a result of your presentation this evening, they've developed an awareness and may think that they can play a role. How could they potentially find out the role they could play and the support they could provide?
Certainly, there's always room. And you can see, when you look at the numbers under the 387, I checked today and it was 416. Certainly, there's gaps. And when we first started presenting, we mentioned there's room for the community. I know that this is a limited opportunity right here, but I would just say, we need folks in the community. We need the community support at large. We need voters at large. We need everyone involved in Rochester. Looking at how affordable rents may or may not be for folks, you could see the numbers of folks that have income coming in versus can they afford what they're expected to pay at rents of what they are right now? And that's a complex issue, right? Like, we know that that's a complex societal issue. I'm not certain that we have all the answers sitting here today, but certainly we would invite anyone to partner and come alongside us because frankly, our students need you.
Director Whitehead?
I love it. I love the, I love all the work that everybody is doing. But coming, thinking from education, because that's what we do right here, school board education, and coming from that lens, so putting on my education hat, and being heavily involved in the community. I know one issue is that we often have families that return into the system, right? Because they are working, we get them housed, and they're kind of right back in that cycle. Sometimes by no, nothing of their own doing, right? Because life happens, cars break down, people pass away, you have situations outside of your control. And some of us are familiar with living check to check, and if you're check to check, one messed up check can make a, can start these snowballs. So with that thought process, my question is, and not to negate from any of the work that we're doing, but just putting on a preventive hat, you know, what, how can, what can you see in the work that you do? And how can we partner in, whether it be financial literacy, is that something that needs to be done sooner? I mean, I know we can't do much about some of the societal things and, you know, pay rates, and like you said, these are bigger issues. But are there things that, from a school system perspective, that we should be promoting or partnering with to, you know, maybe help with budgeting or, you know, help with, you know, savings and these things? Things that people often don't think about until it's, you know, until you're in a bind, right? Then you wish you would have saved, you wish you would have did these things. Is there an educational partnership or opportunity there? Is that something that could be funded? So, you know, some people end on that, that hamster wheel.
I think there's, we could go on all night about this. Like this, I want to be careful because I could, I could, we could, I could talk all night about this. But one of the, one of the things that, you know, through our MTSS, Multi-Tierred System of Support, one of the gaps that we identified was really this, we don't have, we didn't have a family homeless shelter. And so that has been an area that actually our team, including Mary O'Neill, myself, Dave Dunn, many others, have really gotten involved in that family promise. And I know, thank you for, I know you sent, your husband came to the family promise opening, Director Marvin came to the family promise. Dr. Pekel spoke at the family promise opening, but that, what you're talking about is not Band-Aids, right? Like, we, we are trying to really ensure that our system has a response, that our community has a response. Where, where we are working with families, you know, when families are going to enter this new Family Promise homeless shelter, the, the first thing we're going to be talking about or the first, I'm saying "we" because I'm on the board at Family Promise, but one of the first things that we do is start talking about housing immediately, right? We are, we are driven to ensuring your own safe and stable housing going forward and all of the skills and tools that you need to be able to, that we can do, work together to be able to ensure that, that this doesn't happen again. And so I think the other piece with our Tier 3, that Hope Navigation, Housing Outreach to Promote Education, I know I didn't go into that very well, but really, that level of case management is intended to really create and to ensure that, that there's a true understanding of the needs and the barriers that a family is experiencing. And then sort of that really extensive case management to support a family into that long-term, safe and stable housing. So those are two things, I don't know if anyone else would add?
Yeah, I would like to add. So one of the things that I've observed when I took the role as the eviction prevention specialist was, okay, I think I've seen, you know, a family on this list twice. How are we going to get this family off the list where they don't keep running into this same cycle? And coming from an experience, from experience, is, some of these things are generational, where if you didn't teach your kids about financial literacy, or if they don't know anything about credit, they don't know. And you don't know what you don't know. And so one of the things that I've, we always bring to the table is, how can we reach out to community members and other organizations? You know, when we talk about partnerships, to say, can we provide someone who has this specific expertise, whether it's math teachers and whatever the, you know, these are always talks that we're having when we're meeting as a collaborative. It's not something that's going to be solved, obviously, you know, with that one time where that person, you know, we may have been able to prevent eviction, but that generational stuff is generational. And so one of the things that I'm really working hard on is to find ways to collaborate with community outside, to partner with other community organizations that we can come up with, you know, do some budgeting and some financial literacy. But the, the cry is so, the evictions are so urgent and homelessness is so urgent that there's nothing that those families want to do more but to find a place to stay. And so, you know, when we think long-term, I think, you know, when Lita talks about the shelter, you know, when those families go into those shelters, the, the goal is to have a plan and allow them to be, have some type of stability plan in budgeting or whatever the case may be a part of that plan. I think it's just trying to meet those specific family needs.
And looking at working with Goodwill Easter Seals, for example, on employment and increasing income. And I guess I would also add too, in terms of community, and it's a societal problem, but why can't Rochester be the community that ends family homelessness? Why not us? And so in terms of asking, like, what, what is it with the community? I'm not certain. I don't think this table has the answers. But I do think student and family homelessness in Rochester needs to end. It's unacceptable. And so what are we doing to lean in?
And just, just for clarification, I knew some of this, but I guess what I was getting at is kind of where Shea was leaning, that it is generational, right? So how do we take the data that we have, knowing that we do have kids that are more high-risk, to be in this situation and prevent that, right? Because I think the goal of any organization like this, like you said, would be to end homelessness, you know, not that I don't want to put anybody out of a job, but it would be a good thing to say we don't have kids that are, that are unhoused. And I could, you know, use my, my skill set elsewhere in education, right? But, you know, how do we identify those students and maybe make it so the list doesn't continue on? Because as she said, you'll see, you know, in family parent, planning, the parent was homeless and now, you know, the child has a child and they're struggling with housing. So is there a space that maybe we can find that we can be more preventative? I know this, we, like she said, home, being unhoused is a serious thing, and that's a big concern. And once we get past that, but, you know, it's a very reactive process. So how do we, how do we start to shift that so that we can do some more preventative things so that we don't always have this family that's urgently being kicked out in two weeks, right? Because a lot of this, we could see coming with some of the data that we collect. I think it's just in how we're looking at the data we collect.
Thank you, Chair Nathan. Just to Director Whitehorn's point earlier, we are standing up new financial literacy coursework for all students. It's a state requirement, but we'd be doing it otherwise. So that's a really important point. And let me just say with great respect to my awesome colleagues, we do need, no, please stay, the board is not done, but please, you're so passionate, it's so great. The board has a very long agenda for the evening, so please, if we can keep our answers as pointed to the board members' questions, and they would never say that because they're much nicer than I am, but this is fantastic.
Director McLaughlin?
Thank you for this work. And thinking about Dr. Pecel, I'd like to give Mini Goat Award to you all for the attachments that you provided, that they were incredibly helpful. And you could go as deep as you wanted to. And Director Barlow talked about the NPR article, but then it had links to other articles, so it was, you know, very informative. And I really appreciate that, that we could, you know, pick and choose what we wanted to look at. And I think your presentation here answered a lot of my questions, but I just kind of want to point out, from my perspective, mainly because I actually work at Southern Minnesota Regional Legal Services, so I have some connection to this work, more my colleagues than me, but I know what you guys are doing and how important it is. But what I'm understanding from the, first of all, I love the collaboration, but thank you for tying it to the MTSS, because that makes sense to our world here at the board table as to what you're doing. But as I understand it, the Level 1 is to make student and family homelessness brief, rare, and non-reoccurring. And that seems like the, the Level 1 intervention. But the Level 2, as I now understand it, is the prevention. And I really love that because there's so many pieces of our system that we never get there, and the fact that we're doing that here, it's really exciting. So this does answer a lot of my questions, but I did have two. One of the attachments was about that gap analysis. There's a slide in there from the state data that talks about breaking down the state data by grade level. Is that reflective of Rochester as well, or are there, do you notice any differences with that?
Overall, I thought the data was pretty reflective of Rochester. Yeah.
Okay. So there's nothing, nothing really?
I can't speak specifically to that slide, but I wasn't, it wasn't super surprising. Just for your own interest to, across the state, roughly 2% of, of students are experiencing homelessness, and here in Rochester, about 2.5% right now or 3%. So we're right, we're not far off.
Got it. And then my other question is, I appreciated the attachment that had the strategies for working on this work. And you talked some about the school-level point of contact. I want to make sure that we had those in all the schools. But it also talked about professional development. How can, can you talk about how, how informed our regular classroom teachers are about this, or are there professional development things we need to do to improve that knowledge?
You did, you did an excellent job of reading all of the information. Thank you.
So we do have professional development opportunities in place, but certainly, there's room to grow. Each building does have a designated point of contact assigned, and I'm in regular contact with that designated point of contact. Each one of those contacts has received training in identifying what qualifies someone as being eligible for McKinney-Vento, when to reach out. We're in regular contact with each building. We did, at the beginning of the school year, provide training for our ESPs during back-to-school week so that some of the folks that might have first contact with our students also have that training and awareness. We offered training to each building this year. I'm hoping that more buildings take us up on that offer for training in the upcoming school year. But our team is always available to provide, frankly, a similar presentation to what we shared with you, but also the impacts of what that would look like on your practice as a school professional and how to network with this team.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Director Cook?
Well, thank you, you know, along with my colleagues. I'm gratified by the work that you're doing. It's clearly incredibly impactful. I think as a community, the idea that 2% to 3% of our students are homeless ought to be shocking. It ought to be a rallying moment because it's just so unacceptable. But the thing that, that, that I can't stop thinking about is that for, for most of these students, I mean, surely, the, the prospect of eviction is horrifying and it's urgent and demands as much of a response as we can muster collaboratively. But the months leading up to that are also incredibly stressful in the home and for those students and just the, the absence of that security and safety and sense of stability of a safe place to go and be yourself. I, I'm almost, I guess, Lita, the thing that you said is that for, for many students that go through this process, the school is the first time that, that they share that information with somebody. Do we have examples or, or is it, are we able to assess that some families are moving into this very stressful period where they're not yet served with an eviction notice, but they're becoming unstable? And do we have the capacity to respond in any helpful way, like prior to the eviction stage?
Our capacity right now is, from the Rochester Public Schools, that, that Tier 1 is really where we, we'd need that, that level of capacity. So no, I would say, we are, I don't want to speak for Nicole, but working sometimes 12 hours a day, right? Like, really significantly overtime because, you're right, these, these experiences are urgent and stressful and scary, and we need to respond urgently. And so, yeah, I mean, right now, I would say that we don't have the resources to do more, which is why we lean on our collaborative partners for that, for that work.
I will say that since word has gotten out that Rochester Public Schools has an eviction specialist, we've been getting, I've been getting more calls from landlords and property managers saying like, hey, like, I know you do this, are you able to support this family? And in these cases, it has been prior to them having given them notice or given an eviction, filing an actual eviction. And so one of the things in my role that I really want to work on too, was just cultivating those relationships with, obviously, there's a lot of landlords and property managers within our Olmsted County, but getting, you know, my name out there so that they know that there is a contact and that, you know, I am playing the mediator between landlords and tenants, you know, to save the family's homes. I do feel like they, some families will be upfront about it if they don't have any type of, like, resources or they don't know, especially, for example, like a family who may be a multilingual family, or they don't know that there's resources for them within the schools. I can see, in working with those families, it's been a lot of panic, and they think that when they go to court, they have to move that day, you know? So I really stress too, just when reaching out to families, to say, like, the biggest thing that you can do right now, if you've already received an eviction notice, is to appear at court. Because if you don't, then you'll be defaulted and you'll automatically get an eviction on your record. But even just being able to provide some education or on, like, what's happening in the process, I felt like families are more at ease in the urgency that they are in a housing crisis.
That's really good to know, that property managers are reaching out to you proactively in some cases. I think it's a, that's good to know that, because I, you know, the other thing that I, I just wanted to acknowledge is that eviction specialist role is not something that we had in RPS until very recently. So really glad that, that, that this is doing such a good job of being impactful to the families that we're able to reach. So anyway, thank you again very, very much, and thanks for the presentation.
As Director Cook just said, we haven't had this 18 before, for before. And then I look at your sources of funding for Olmsted County, and I look at what is funding our, our staff and our services. And we were talking about how the community can get involved. Is there anything that our state legislators or federal legislators are considering right now that is threatening any of these funding sources that our community needs to know about or stay aware of? Because if that funding goes away, we would have to make some hard decisions about how to support this work. And obviously, the, the number of students is going up daily. So anything you can share about that?
From the Rochester Public School side, like I mentioned, we are funded largely out of Title 1. The homeless set aside is within that budget. And so I, I don't, I'm, I'm hopeful that Title 1 isn't, Title 1 continues, right? I mean, it's, it's been around for a long time and since before the Department of Education, and it serves, you know, it's federal dollars that serves the entire country. And certainly, there are areas of this country that would be really challenged without that, those, those dollars. And so it is a bipartisan, it's been historically very, you know, sign, strong bipartisan support, so my hope is that it's not. But yeah, you're right. I mean, it's a, it's a serious consideration. It's a serious consideration. Thank you for bringing that up.
Anything at state level?
We had a, we had a grant with a community-based organization a year ago. And so no, there's nothing consistent. The consistent funding that we have is through McKinney-Vento and Title 1.
Board members? Well, thank you very much. We look forward to keeping updates about this work and.
Thank you for having us. We really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Our next item is a monitoring item, Curriculum Review and Revision Process. Superintendent Pecel?
Thank you, Chair Nathan, and board members. Our Chief Academic Officer, Mona Perkins, is coming up, and our Director of Secondary Education, Heather Willman. This presentation may be a bit of cruel and unusual punishment for you as board members because it is only going to be a taste of the deep work on curriculum that is happening in our Office of Academic Services. We wanted to provide this because we know that the implementation of our new literacy curriculum has been much on people's minds, and we know that the board has already approved the implementation of a new science curriculum for next year. We wanted to show you that we are thinking far beyond those two immediate next steps. Thanks to the passage of the referendum, we now have a base of $1.2 million a year, not sufficient for all of our needs, but a base on which we can invest in continually making sure our students are being provided with knowledge-rich, highly engaging, inclusive curricula in all subject areas. And so when I saw that the team was doing really deep work on this, I said, let's give the board and other folks who are watching kind of a preview of coming attractions. We know you'll have many questions about individual subject areas in this plan, about the finances in the plan, about implementation. We look forward to providing you with more information on all of that, but here's a snapshot of the years ahead. And I will just say, I was in two schools this afternoon, and questions came up in both instances about what's next after literacy. And so this is timely for people in our schools as well. So Mona and Heather, thanks for your leadership.
Thanks for having us. Heather is going to kick us off.
Yeah, so before we get into the details of the plan, we just wanted to kind of ground us in our why. And really, this is about high-quality Tier 1 instruction for every student. We know we've been working on deeper learning through our deeper learning teams, but now that's really going to live within this curriculum articulation cycle. So as you think about MTSS, as they just talked about as well, this is really that high-quality instruction for every student, every day, in every classroom.
And when we sat down to think about our curriculum as a whole, we were really trying to think about, we wanted a long-term plan for our curriculum enhancement process. What had been, what had been kind of the history was, new standards come out, you look at the standards, you look at a, what curriculum you're going to adopt, you implement, and then you just kind of let it go for 10 years until the new set of standards come out, and then you kind of repeat that, that cycle. And that's not what we wanted. We wanted to have a better process where you're constantly reviewing the, even after you adopt a curriculum, we wanted to be looking at it and making adjustments because, because you want to adjust to who's in front of you, and nothing that you adopt is perfect. And so you want to be constantly looking at the material. And so, you want to be constantly looking at the materials, the instruction, the, you know, doing work with the PLCs and all of that. So, when we started this work, we started really looking at what are the phases that we, that we want this to be in? And so, we landed on four phases, but they're not necessarily four years. So, a phase can be more than, more than one year. And so, you start with phase one, which is when, when it's just the very beginning and you're looking at the current state. So, you're looking at your current data, you're looking inward, you're looking around, you're analyzing for alignment with elements of deeper learning. And then you can start moving into phase two and that starts your planning and figuring out what are your, what are the best practices? You're looking at what curriculum you might want to adopt and you're looking at the different criteria, aligning it to standards. You might pick a couple curriculum that you want to possibly pilot. And if you choo-, if we choose to do that, the next phase would be a pilot. So, that still stays in phase two, although that might be two years. And then, if you're choosing to pilot, you pilot and then you move into implementation. If we already know what curriculum we're going to pick, you just purchase it and move into implementation. Prior to implementation, prior to the full purchase, the board does have to, when you're making a, a large purchase, the board would have to approve the purchase if it's over $100,000, that's the dollar amount, I believe?
One-seventy-five.
One-seventy-five. Okay. And then, so like, for example, this year was our full implementation of Witten Wisdom. So, this year, we are in phase three of Witten Wisdom. So, we're using the new materials and instructional strategies, assessments, all of that.
And you might wonder where student work or student voice comes in. And really, that would be in phase three, in the full implementation, although sometimes even in our planning, we may want to get feedback from our students or our families before we make that choice. But really, phase three would be when we'd be looking at student work. We also found this year with Witten Wisdom, we needed more collaboration time and the teachers needed just more time to be able to really delve into that. So, that would come in, in phase three as well.
Then when we shift into phase four, this is where the, a lot of the revision stuff happens and this is, I think, probably one of the, the most important parts because, and this is where we're looking at some tight collaboration between central office and, and the schools. Because 4.1 is the PLC work and data review where we're looking at materials and resources, if there's any support that, that we need from the central office to really look at any material adjustments that need to happen system-wide, any adjustments with assessments, tools, anything like that. And then 4.2 is, that's the work, the heavier lift is more at the building level with, in collaboration with the, with central office. And that's more around practice and routines, it's more around the PLC work, they're digging into the student data and making adjustments at the, at the, you know, classroom level. So, that would repeat and you're constantly making revisions and adjustments there. That is where like the, the heart of the work is. And then you keep doing that work until you circle back to phase one, which, whenever that comes back up around. But that's the important part because we're not dropping it, you know, for 10 years.
I think one thing I'll say about our process, we did a lot of study of other districts and what, what their phases looked like and how did they really think about how to make this more of a continuous improvement process and not just, we take a look and then we see you in, you know, eight or 10 years. So, we spent a lot of time really looking at and hearing what worked and so, I think that helped us land on these four phases.
So, then, then we had to look at, okay, now let's actually outline the work. And so, we started with every subject area, where are we at and outlining it, this is the long-term plan and what phase are we in, in each of these subject areas? So, there's actually two slides here, we just didn't stick them all in one. So, for, for English, elementary was in implementation this year and secondary was in phase two.
Phase two, planning.
In the planning. And so, then next year, elementary will be in the revision phase. Do you want to touch on that?
Sure.
Secondary?
Yeah. And with English, for secondary, we really spent a lot of time on looking at the standards, looking at the instructional shifts. And then, we've been working a lot on vertical alignment, so thinking about how do those standards build at each grade level? And one of the things that's come out of that work is single-point rubrics. So, we can see what changes in the standard from sixth grade to seventh grade to eighth grade. We didn't feel like we had tight enough alignment with that. We've also talked a lot about common texts. And so, then next year will be our year of implementation and then we'll be collecting student work and using those rubrics in our practice. So, that's kind of what the, the process looked like in English. You can see in social studies, we're kind of at the current state right now. We're looking at what are the standards asking us to do and where are their gaps? What does the data look like? We've been spending some time at secondary with a, a social studies leadership team that's been helping us think about, well, how do we now get everyone on board with that work? And one of the things that team really urged us to do is to bring all social studies teachers in. And so, that's been a part of this work this year as well. I think probably one of the most beneficial pieces for me was thinking about backward mapping and making sure that we have the right resources to be able to support all of these groups because, as you can see, there's a lot going on and we have to make sure that we have that central office support, especially for the phases one, two, and three. And then, how do we make sure we keep that PLC going?
Yes, and we want to, you, you got to look at when the new standards roll out and you also have to think about if you're actually purchasing a curriculum, you can't have them all be purchased in the same year. You want to make sure that you have the dollars aligned as well. And so, a lot of this, like, we had to look at, there was a lot of looking at, okay, what, what can we support when and making sure we're not missing when things need to be rolled out aligned with standards and that type of thing. So, when you look at math, elementary, excuse me, elementary right now is looking at doing, identifying what is a potential small-scale pilot that we can do for next year. So, we'll identify some, some. Teachers have volunteered to be part of a pilot and then, so, like, they're looking at what, what are the curricular resources we'll use for that. We'll do a small-scale pilot next year and then once from that, from the information we gather from that, the following year, we'll have a larger pilot. And then full implementation, the 27, 28 year, which is when the standards are actually, need to be implemented.
And at the secondary level, that work has really looked like a secondary leadership team. So, we have a math team that has administrators, some math teachers, and we're really looking at what are the standards asking us to do? How have they changed? And then we're doing some common reading together as well. And then next year, we'll be thinking about how do we get our grade-level teachers involved? But this first visionary group has really helped us think about what are the shifts? One of the things they've been kind of talking with us about from MDE is that you don't necessarily have to have new materials, but we need to think differently about how we use those materials. So, we don't know yet whether there will be new resources needed, but right now, we're just spending some time looking at how have the, the standards changed and shifted and what are the instructional moves that we need to be thinking about?
So, that's it. So, our, this other page is just the other topics for subject areas. That's all.
Since you just talked about it.
Ooh. Under the. Good timing.
You talked about when the standards needed to be implemented for math. Can you tell us what years the standards need to be implemented for the other subjects?
We have all that outlined.
Okay. Would that be the year of implementation?
Or we tried to align it as best we could for most of them. Some of them, we did have to push it out a little bit just because, so when you're looking at elementary, you have the same teachers doing all the subject areas and you can't overload them.
Right.
Do you know what I mean?
Yes.
And so, there's some where we had to, we had to make some adjustments and just say like, we might have to push it out a year.
So, math would be 27, 28. 26, 27 would be social studies. And then next year is English, although we were a little ahead of the curve with Witten Wisdom because we needed it sooner than what the, the standards had to be implemented.
And for other courses, like we experienced with personal finance, we're at the mercy, should the legislature decide there are new requirements or new classes that we have to implement, we have to somehow fit it in with this cycle.
Yeah. And we talked about that a little bit just in preparation for this because we have this long-range plan for, you know, we have new standards and then we're going to do this full look. But sometimes we have things like personal finance where we might have a course that's already in existence, but we need to make sure that we're adhering to what the state is asking us to do. We also sometimes have situations, a few years ago, we had a health where we really felt like we needed to really update that. And even though there weren't new standards coming from the state, we were hearing from our community and our families and our students that we needed to take a look. So, then we would do probably more of a short-term response to what we're hearing. So, I think that's, that's kind of how we handle it. So, personal finance, we've had some curriculum writing last year and then we'll have some this summer as well to look at. There's lots of new curriculum because of the, most states adding this and so, that's been a benefit. And most of it's open source, so it does, there's no cost, which is great.
And I think that's part of that fourth phase, right? Like, you're always looking at what curricular adjustments do you need to make and then, you know, what instructional adjustments do you, do you need to make? That just has to be part of what we're doing all the time. Because it's not, it's, if we think what we're going to roll out year one is perfect, like, it'll never be. And so, we always have to be ready to make those adjustments.
Director Cook?
So, thanks for sharing all this. I just had two observations slash questions. One is I have come to, and maybe this is just because of the last couple of curriculum purchases that the board has made, I've come to think of curriculum as largely subscription model and maybe that's not really quite accurate, maybe it is largely a one-time purchase, but we, usually, there's a lot of consumables and often, you know, software subscriptions and things that go along with it. Is, is that the right way to think about curriculum purchases or is it more of a one-time thing?
It can, sometimes. It can be, like, you can purchase books. There's some, a lot of times subscriptions that come with it that neither, you renew after so many years. Sometimes there's workbooks. Sometimes it's, you're writing it, you're creating it. So, like, there's different models and different types of, so, it's, it's really like the, the curricular resource is just one part of it. But, but the, the big purchase is often that, but it's not always, so like the, the ELA for secondary, there wasn't a huge purchase this year.
I think sometimes you, you see the, the more comprehensive models at the elementary level or K6. And so, we see more subscription there. And then, we've been lucky, like with science, there's a next-generation science standards. And so, there's a lot of open-source materials that are really high-quality and that are of no cost or low cost. So, it kind of depends on the discipline and what's out there in terms of the open-source materials and if we think they're high-quality enough. And so, we have to kind of, you know, do that digging and think about, well, what's the gap? And then, what's our data telling us? And, and that helps us think about whether or not we need a subscription. And usually, when you do a textbook or a comprehensive program, then you'll get like an eight- or 10-year subscription, but sometimes.
So, it kind of fits into that cycle anyway?
Right. If your cycle goes too long, then you might have to figure out, okay, we've got to pay for this for a couple more years until we're ready to, to look again.
And then, okay, that's all super helpful. Thank you. And then, the other thing I was wondering on the, I, I, I think I understood that this is all aligned with the state standards and this is essentially our implementation of state standards. So, when I look at science, it just jumped out at me that there's nothing for computer science. And is there no state standard for computer science? Maybe that's, do, I don't know. Is there?
So, there, there are, so we have computer science standards that are now embedded into the other areas as well.
Okay.
And then there are also computer science teaching standards. And so, the state is really working on that, but that's an area where we don't really have it in our articulation cycle and we probably need to think about that. We're lucky, we have a grant right now from the Department of Education for expanding computer science. And so, we've been meeting throughout this year, thinking about, well, how can we build more exploration at the elementary level? And then, what does that look like in middle school so that our students can really feed into that high school pathway? Because we have strong high school courses, but we have, I think it's less than 2% of our students that are actually engaging in computer science because we don't have the buildup at the elementary and middle. So, that would be an area that we might have to think about adding into our long-range planning. And I know Dr. Pecel has thought a little bit about that, maybe on the next, some of the next goals that, that we're thinking about.
Yeah, I think I'd just say really briefly to Chair Nathan's question about finance too, these, this is the plan for the major subject areas. We teach many other things that need more targeted strategies. Unfortunately, computer science right now would fall into that category, being a niche subject that, that relatively few kids in RPS take. One of the questions that I think about a lot in a place where Mayo Clinic is reinventing medicine using artificial intelligence is should we have a much more ambitious computer science strategy as part of our next strategic plan? But right now, there are many different, more targeted subjects where the curriculum review process is going to look more limited and targeted than in the areas that Mona and Heather have mapped out because these are the biggies. But we'd love to continue that conversation for sure.
Director Mark, one.
Hopefully, this is a quick question. When you are piloting a new curriculum or approach, how do you, how is it determined where or who does the piloting?
That's a good question. So, this is, for math, this year, we are, we offered it up as, like, teachers, they volunteered. But you can do it differently. You can do it by volunteer, you can select, like, it, it just kind of depends on how we want to do it. But, but this year, for math, we asked them and we had, I think we had a really good number in elementary that, that have volunteered. Yeah.
And as we discussed that a little bit, we talked about the value of trying to have like a small school or a larger school or multiple grade levels, just so you get feedback from multiple grades. But I think we just said who's, who's interested, who's willing.
Yes.
At least for this initial one.
Right. Because you can, I mean, it'd be great to have, even if you don't have an entire school do it, like to have, like an entire grade level add a school to it. But, yeah, for this, for this, especially this initial small one, we just did it by volunteer.
Director Mark.
So, just for my own clarification, so I'm on the same page as everybody else here because y'all already may be there and maybe I'm not in the same book. So, the new standards are implemented every eight to 10 years? Is that, is that on average?
Usually, they're on a 10-year cycle.
On a 10-year cycle.
But with COVID, everything got kind of compacted because there were a number of years where there wasn't the same work that was able to be done at the Department of Education. So.
Well, talk to me nice here because I, I got a question, maybe I just don't, I'm not grasping. But if we are implementing the phase one and the phase two, does this mean that when we're looking at curriculum, we're looking, we're making an assumption of what the standard will be, right? Because it seems to me that some of this work we're doing is going to be prior to the new standard coming out and things change rapidly. So, when we're in that phase two, are we having to be mindful that we can assume that this is what the new standard is going to look like? I mean, how, how does that look if we say we want to implement this fantastic program and then the state standard comes down and they're like, well, we want you to do all of this? So, how are we making an assumption for information we don't have yet or is there data somewhere that gives us a?
That's a good question.
You know, how, how, how are we not having to redo this process all over again when the standard hits?
Yeah. So, usually, the, the standards come out and then there's a period when people can give public comment and then they go through rulemaking and then you have a chance at the local level. So, we don't generally make any big decisions until they've gone through the rulemaking and we know that there won't be significant shifts. So. through the rulemaking, and we know that there won't be significant shifts. So social studies was an example where it took a long time to get through. There was a lot of public comment. If we would have purchased based on the first iteration of standards, we might have had to make some changes. So we typically wait till they go, get through rulemaking, and then that's when we start to look at...
So we don't start Phase One until then?
Yeah, like, it's way ahead of time. Look, we already know the math standards that are going to be implemented in 2027. Yeah.
Well, but if I think, it's a really credible question. No, it's a really important question, Director Whitehorn. Phase One actually is agnostic to the standards. It's what's our current state. What's, it's our internal. How's it working? Where, where's the curriculum connecting? What does our data show? It's when Phase Two and shifting into Phase Three happens that we have to be watching the state in those subject areas where there are state standards. So that's where, it's a very important question. The other thing, too, is, at least in the three years I've been here, this is a much more formally organized approach than we've been taking. So we are actually articulating this to you as we are beginning to implement it. And so I think the process itself is new for RPS, and I'm excited that you looked at as many other districts as you did in figuring this out, because I'm sure we're going to learn some things about how to get that balance right. You don't want the state standards to drive all of your local discussion, because I frankly have been on state standard-setting committees, and it's just a bunch of regular people like us sitting around saying what they think kids should know. The Minnesota state standards are not sent from God or grounded in, inalterable science. They're professional judgment. And so while they're very important, and they're the law, we see what Rochester kids need. We see what's happening in our data. So we want to pay attention to that, but we also want to look, for instance, one of the great discussions about, that I'm sure we're going to talk about in a moment, we talked about the skip process. Should we be aligned with the ACT, which is not based on Minnesota standards, or the MCAs, which is? I've recommended the ACT because I think it's more relevant for our high school kids going forward, but it's not tightly aligned with the state standards. So state standards matter, but they're not the whole ballgame as we think about this.
So is there a danger in us choosing a curriculum that doesn't align with the state standards? Does that affect our funding? Like, what, what if we say this is what's best for RPS, but like you said, the state standard is, is different?
Yes, that's a very important point. If you, if you adopted a curriculum that was highly misaligned, you, it would start to show up in your test scores, because where kids are actually not being introduced to concepts at a time when they're taking that assessment, the curriculum might be teaching them one or two years later, or it might be teaching them in what we call a spiraling fashion, where the kid is introduced to the concept, but then they get it deepened over time. And so we do have to think hard about the level of alignment. I would just say it's not a straitjacket. Like, we want to be thinking, I mean, the wit and wisdom purchase is a good one. Is it broadly aligned with Minnesota's English language arts standards at elementary school, elementary level? Yes. There were other curriculum options that we looked at that maybe were more aligned, you know, at every grade level point, but I think we made the choice, not just for alignment with state standards, but for deeper learning and for engaging curriculum. So it's a, it's a balance as you make that decision.
We do have a healthy skepticism when we look at, most curriculum companies will say we are highly aligned to the standards.
Yeah, they all promise that.
And you really have to take a look and make sure that it does match what you are aiming for. And because we have deeper learning built into this now, we'll be looking for those pieces. So we don't always just trust if it says it's aligned. We spend a lot of time making sure that's, that's the case.
Because I was with Director Cook, I thought it was a subscription-based situation.
I'll just say, having got friends in the educational publishing business, they want it to be like software. That's their dream. It's just like, ooh, 3.0, pay up. That's what they're all aiming for. Depends on what subject area is, if they can kind of get there, and how tech-based it is.
And having heard how you've selected curriculum in the past, the issue of making sure we have curriculum that aligns with the needs of RPS students, it doesn't just have to be one purchase, right? We could, we could purchase a Tier One, for example, and then there's a lot of other products that we could fill in. And we, we did that a little bit with the reading curriculum, right?
Completely. Do we have three separate resources?
Yeah, and the rubrics that we're using as we're looking at, like, the, as we're looking at the different curriculums, like, it, we're looking at, does it align to state standards? Does it, does it have components of deeper learning? Does it have a Tier Two interventions that are aligned to the Tier One instruction? Does it have Tier, Tier Three components? Like, we look at all of that. So, so that we're looking at the, at the curriculum as, like, comprehensively, to make sure that, so that we know if, if its pieces are missing, then we know what's missing.
Anything else, Board members? Clearly, you have a lot of work on your plate, so thank you very much. So Board members, we have four prep-for-action items in front of us. Would any Board member like to take a recess at this time or power on?
I think a break would be productive.
Okay. So can we do it in five minutes or 10 minutes?
Five would be okay.
Five. All right. Board is adjourned at 7:25 to return in five minutes. Prep for action, 8.1 SRO contract. The board would take action if it so chooses at the May 6 meeting. And under the current SRO contract, the contract automatically renews for a period of 12 calendar months unless either party provides written notice of termination to the other party. And as we'll discuss in the agenda item, the board has other options for action. So what I'm looking for, Board members, by the end of this discussion tonight, is some direction as to what you want that resolution to look like for us to consider for action at the May 6 meeting. Superintendent Pekel?
Thank you. I want to ask Jackie Peterson, who's our Chief of Schools, to come up. And I think, Jackie, we're going to bring Chris Lingan, who's our Director of School Safety, and Sergeant Joel Blonnik from the Rochester Police Department. Are we bringing another colleague up? Very good. Come on up.
Lieutenant Ryan Magnussen is my...
Okay, great. Officer Magnussen, good to see you again. Thank you. Board members, as you know, the, our school resource officers provide a very valuable source of support for our students, our staff, and sometimes our families. That said, this board, since I got to Rochester, has also been deeply engaged in making sure that our officers are positive forces around relationships and school safety. The board has been directly involved. I want to thank Director McLaughlin in particular for helping us rewrite the contract, which I think has held up very well to meet the needs. So this is our opportunity, both to get an update on what our school resource officers have done over the last school year, and then, as Chair Nathan mentioned, certainly to give the board the opportunity to decide if you want to take any action regarding the contract, which otherwise does renew with no action. So, Jackie?
Thank you, Chair Nathan. Members of the board, Superintendent Pekel, we're pleased to be here with this report, which I think does a nice job of explaining the work that's gone on this year with our SROs. And I'm, I'm pleased and proud to work with this group of officers who serve our, our buildings and, and our students and families. So I'll just jump right into our presentation. I'm not sure if I've ever shared photos of our SROs in our previous presentations, so I thought I'd share these. Our middle school SROs, Officer Arzola, who serves Dakota and John Adams, and Officer Royston, Kellogg and Willow Creek. And at the high school, we've got Officer Condon at Century, Officer Gilbertson at John Marshall, and Officer Jackson at Mayo. And they also share time at the, at the Area Learning Center. They have an office there and take turns providing support. And then we've got Officer Fordham, who spends his days at Phoenix Academy. And then we've got Officer Blonnik here, who is a team lead and provides us district-wide support as well. And we appreciate all the work that he does with us. He works regularly with Chris, and if we have anything happening district-wide that we need some guidance on, we, we are lucky to have, I won't say 24/7. We try not to call him in the middle of the night, but he takes our calls anytime, which we appreciate. So I put this slide in here. I think at the end of the night here, you're going to be looking at, you're going to be talking about policies that, that we've been recently updating. And this is directly from a policy on school resource officers. So I thought I would just put this slide here to remind us what, what our statute says about the work of, of resource officers. And I don't know that any of us would argue about any of these points, and we certainly feel well-served by our team of SROs on all of these points in our schools on a daily, on a daily basis. I won't read all of these, but definitely, I would say, on a daily basis, many of these points come up. Probably safety drills, we're not doing those on an everyday basis, but we do continue to run our safety drills that we're required to do, and we do receive guidance on both our crisis plans that, that set the tone for those safety drills, and then our SROs are a resource for how our drills have gone when we do have those. We, you, we, Sergeant Blonnik provided the activity logs from all of our resource officers, so six officers, about seven and a half months of data. And with the help of Dr. Peter Rock, we were able to process all of that information into some usable data for you to see how frequent those activities. Now, this is, these are activities that actually Director McLaughlin helped scope in the contract. Other activities that we were looking for in terms of building relationships and the things that you see here below, presentations to classes and whole grade levels of students, helping individual students, helping resolve issues, meeting with families when they had issues either in school or issues that happened outside of school that were impacting their children at school, like social media posts and, and threats of violence and concerns that happened outside of school that were impacting their children in school. So you can see that the greatest, greatest issue that our SROs are working through are those, we call them meetings on violence, but really, those are, as I was mentioning, a student who's really struggling with an issue of, maybe with one student or a group of students feeling that there's an issue or a threat coming for, through social media, or they've had an, an ongoing issue with a student or a group of students that is disrupting their learning environment. And they're looking for support to resolve that issue peacefully. But by far, that was the greatest, over 400 situations like that, reflected in those activity logs. In addition, we, we also used AI to summarize those, the logs, although I will say, I took the time to read all of those, all of the logs, and actually really enjoyed getting to know a little bit more about the individual events that occurred in all of our schools. We try to categorize, categorize what those activities have been. So the first category, a high focus on violence reduction and support, supporting social issues are really social media issues. So the first category, a high focus on violence reduction and support, supporting social issues or really social media issues or individual issues between students or groups of students. So coordination with administrative, administration and staff would be, really would highlight a lot of different issues. But really, safety issues that might be coming from students or might be coming from parents calling into the school, saying, my child is reporting this. It might be something that was posted on social media that brings up a concern that might be coming into school as a threat. So we are working closely with our SROs to investigate and make sure that our schools are a safe place for our kids to be every day. And sometimes the follow-up to behavior, as you see noted here, might be a request from school. And it might be a request from parents who would like to know more about what, what our SROs can do to help. Participation in school and community events is pretty self-explanatory. Our SROs are at a lot of events that happen during the school day and after the school day. I noted some of those that were showing up in the activity logs, like the CERT back-to-school event, ITAR celebration. One of our SROs was invited to and went to the Shabbat pancake breakfast that some of the kids invited him to. And he was maybe five or six kids that invited him there. The polar plunge, a lot of our SROs are participating in. And then the final bullet here, incident response and crisis management. So as I mentioned before, planning and helping with safety drills and collaboration with us as district leaders if we've had threats that we are investigating to make sure that our schools are safe. We also, there, you've heard probably about swatting incidents where a school might get a call. It might not even be a school in our district, but might get some sort of a bomb threat or something that ends up being kind of a national event. Officer Blonik will call us and tell us, this is happening nationally. You might want to let your schools know to be aware if they get a call, that it could be a swatting event or a fake event. And, but they should let us know. It helps us not, not immediately go to high alert, but know that there's something happening in the nation that, that we should be aware of. In the area of student support, this, this shows up a lot. We have students who really are looking to SROs to help them when they're facing issues of, as I mentioned before, social media tends to generate a lot of issues between students where they maybe are the subject of a social media post that, that is putting them in a difficult situation among friends. Maybe they are feeling threatened through a social media post. Maybe they're hearing that there might be a fight that's going to take place. But there's, there were a lot of instances indicated in these activity logs of students seeking out SROs for help, advice, guidance, to make SROs aware of something that might be happening. So a lot of individual counseling and guidance. Again, the trust and rapport building. Some of that is just being available in the lunchrooms and in common areas. Okay, in common areas for, for, just to build those relationships. It was, Dr. Pecel and I were out giving an award to Officer Al. He received the award recently, right after spring break. And afterward, many students were coming up and receiving, I think, they, he was making paracord bracelets for a while. So they were asking for those and asking for, for items and having personal conversations. So those good connections are being made. And then the safety and emotional wellbeing, helping students with their concerns. In the neighborhood, around the school, there were some, many incidents of officers helping with traffic control at the beginning of the year, making sure that our neighborhoods, our streets, that, that parents are approaching school safely for drop-off and pickup. All these things that you really appreciate, that sort of help and guidance. And then finally, the educational engagement that we had, that's called out in the contract, that is happening across the district, both in individual classrooms and in auditorium environments. So for classroom teachers may be asking, like a social studies teacher might be asking for an SRO to come in and talk about the Constitution or talk about their role in the community. And also, SROs are, are preparing and presenting whole grade level presentations on things like the, the dangers of social media or what to watch out for with social media. There were some presentations on, on fighting and, you know, how to avoid fighting and what can happen if you do fight. And so just trying to be proactive with students. And then the last point here, interactive and practical learning experiences. So one-to-one discussions with students and families and helping students understand what, what the SRO role is. And then I'm going to turn it over to Chris to talk about our data. And we'll try to speed through them. I'll scroll, scroll for you. We'll try to go quickly through this.
This is the data that we've talked about numerous times. I've continued to grow with and you've asked for it in different ways. I think we're hitting that spot. I think that we've talked about it numerous times of what exactly we're looking for in our data. So if you look at this, there's three main parts to it. There's the incident type, things that the SRO or RPD responds to. And we've got a reporting source for what our schools are, our high school, middle elementary, or ALCs. And the outcome, no action, a citation, Three Rivers, diversion, convicted in court or open and active. The numbers will equal, so your toll number incidents will equal in the green column, and they'll also equal in the blue column together. So example is, let's look at assault. We've got six in the high school, the middle school, and one at our ALC per toll of 13. Okay, numbers add up. If you go across into the blue column for the shaded area, we've got six that had no action, one that had a citation, four went to Three Rivers, and two are still in court. There's our number of annual 13. Now, when we talk about some of our issues, when we, when we talk about our schools that refer to our police officers, those are items that probably will have a level two. I can't say every one of them, but those will have a level two and have some sort of documentation in our Skyward system. Then if you go a couple down to community service, there's 28 items. Those items probably are not in our system as far as a level two because they're not a discipline system. Those are things that, that our SROs provide outside of our regular pieces that you're thinking of, the discipline part or a conviction part of things. I want to keep scrolling down. We've got all of our items through that.
Because community service might be going to change a battery in, in ASD students' device to a location device. Yeah. For example. So there's. And this is also in your board pack, so you can see it as one document. I know it's hard to see on, on a slide.
I'm not sure how in-depth you want me to go in each one of these, but it kind of gives us our background as far as where our data came from.
And one last one.
I think if it's, if it's fair, Madam Chair, I would just say, in the big picture, what we're seeing is that very few, essentially none of our students are actually moving through school to convictions. They're all being dealt with through what we might call either more restorative, community service oriented, with a couple of exceptions where it's still in process and where we would also expect it to be resolved along those lines. Does that seem fair to you? And again, this, we really are grateful to the board for pushing for this data and for RPD for producing it. Because when I first got here, we did not, at least from within the school district, we didn't know exactly how many of our kids were getting, as they say, caught in the criminal justice system. And what we're seeing is, at least as it applies to our SROs in school, it's essentially none. Now, they're interacting with law enforcement, but just to sort of, my big takeaway from that.
And I think another issue that we've talked about in the past is that no action column or the, all the outcome columns, that it's not, who makes that decision as to how that moves through the system? So could you just touch a little bit on, you know?
Yeah, so if that takes place, we refer it. So let's say I'm at Mayo High School, and we have an issue, an assault that happens at Mayo High School. I refer that to our SRO, and from there, it becomes to them. I don't have any way of saying to them, you need to charge this, or I want you to charge this. This is now on them. They do their pieces, SRO-wise, and then within the county, within the county attorney's office, you can explain that part. But once the event happens, we do it separately, and then off they go on, onto their part. We really can't say, they may come back and say, hey, is it okay to look at Three Rivers or look at that, that type of stuff? That's why I see a lot of the Three Rivers piece within that or diverse type of thing. Yes, of course, we're not in the process of telling them, you want me to have this happen.
Yeah, so actually, as it gets referred over to us, then the SRO review the incident. They'll meet with the student, meet with the parent, they'll have a conversation, they'll talk about the incident itself, they'll look at it at the big picture, and then how do we resolve this? A lot of these incidents, we do refer to Three Rivers. Sometimes parents say, hey, we'd like this to be referred to the courts. That doesn't say or negate anything that it wouldn't go to court, but then we do have a relationship with the county attorney's office. They also look at this incident. And some of these incidents may also just get restored or to restorative practices and then deferred from court. I've seen a lot of great success with Three Rivers. We really believe in it. Our department is strongly involved in that. We've seen just a lot of great outcomes, so it does work very well. And it works well into the school district.
Before we move off the data, one question for our team. This doesn't mean that there aren't disciplinary consequences according to our student handbook and our policies on discipline for any of these incidents.
Correct.
And we'll see that data.
July.
July this year, how we have handled it.
I think I totaled up a number, and if somebody pulled up a different number, that's fine. I think I had 277, that may not be the exact number. But we don't have 277 referrals that we refer to law enforcement. So some of these are not things, some of these things that came in from the community or came in that way that, that the work that came out, we don't have 277 referrals.
Like we don't, we don't put animals into Skyward. Animal calls, yeah.
Director Whitehorn.
So these are incidents though. So how, can we get a number of students that are impacted? Because at the end of it, I believe it says, what was it? 16 persons are involved, but there are only two, three, 10, Three River incidents reported. I guess I would like to see actually more accurately how many students are impacted. Because a fight can involve 13 students. I mean, so the data is a little misleading that, you know, you may have one kid in court for it, but the call could have involved multiple students. And then I'd also be curious to know, and just in the work that I've done in, in the criminal justice, that oftentimes there's multiple charges. So a kid could be, have disorderly conduct that also is within assault. So we're counting it, you know, as two separate incidents, but sometimes a, one incident can result in multiple violations. May I say? Is that reflected here or is it just per?
So the incidents that we refer to, like Three Rivers, so let's say there's a fight. That'll probably be referred as disorderly. It goes to Three Rivers as disorderly. They go through that program as disorderly. So you're exactly right. So one incident, there could be five or six students involved, but again, it's getting referred to as a disorderly.
I don't think, Director Whitehorn, and you guys correct me, I don't think in these data, and again, we've only been doing this for a couple of years, and it's gotten better every year. I don't think there's doubling up of incidents. So there's probably each incident is standalone. Are there many instances in which a disorderly is also an assault in this data? Or if it's happening in school, is it usually one or the other?
It's usually one or the other.
I think in most cases, now, your point about number of students is, we haven't had that request up till now. I think we probably would need to build that into next year's reporting, but we could do that. Because right now, the request was to track incidents when there's an incident. And I think we've gotten pretty accurate in the, distilling the incidents, but we could certainly look at that for future years of number of students impacted in each incident. Going forward.
And that information would be reflected in our July report. So we will see it at some point separate.
If it's disciplinary to RPS, as opposed to from them. Yeah, you'll see it if it resulted in RPS discipline.
For example, if the suspicious circumstance, there's 22 of them, that's not going to be reflected probably in our discipline data. But it could be, I don't know if it's 22 different students or if it's eight students.
Yeah, we can.
Director McLaughlin.
I really appreciate this work, and I think that it's reflective of, you know, Dr. Berler and I can talk about this, and Dr. Garcia's not here, but this is what we were hoping for over modifying the contract is, is having it in a way that's digestible and understandable. So I appreciate that. One question I do have is that the logs that the officers are doing, is that going to continue so we can continue to see this kind of data?
Absolutely.
Okay. I just, one shift that was just like a one-off, or we're going to continue that. And then I had a question about the other data, I think. That one escapes me, I guess. The other point that I wanted to make, oh, I really appreciate, and I think one of the other intents of all that earlier work we did in earlier years is to completely separate the discipline data from this law enforcement data. And the fact that we're talking about it in two different months is what we were hoping for. So really appreciate that work as well.
Do you think RPD, we've asked of them, and they just added a complaint for us and say, yeah, we can get it for us? In fact, I need the time, so that I can find that, but we have, we got it for a month.
Sometimes it takes a little bit of time, but we can get it.
Any more on the data before we let them finish their last slide?
I've got one more question.
Director Whitehorn.
Is there also, are you noticing any repeats? Kind of like we were talking with the eviction process, where Shay had mentioned that she has seen certain families come through two or three times, you know, for an eviction. Are you noticing the same kind of trends from the SROs? Are we noticing certain children or groups of children? And I'm asking for this information as to how we could be more proactive and preventative if we are recognizing trends. You know, maybe there are things we can maybe do to intervene before they are incarcerated.
Yeah, and that, that's a great question. And I think that's something, again, we could look at the data and the numbers, because sometimes if they go through Three Rivers, we see great outcomes with that. By doing restorative circles, it works great. But if the student would be moved, let's say, to a different school, or they maybe go online for a while and then come back. And we haven't been tracking that, and we can do a better job doing that. And again, it's more data that we can certainly search and then try to collaborate again together for next year for these numbers. I can definitely get them to you.
In July, when we share the discipline data, we do show you that repeat, you know, how many kids have multiple instances of behavior.
I haven't been here in July yet, so.
You'll get to have it in July.
I remember my other question. This for you, Officer Blonik, but it seems like historically, the school resource officers were tasked with investigating things that were referred from within your department to do interviews and that kind of stuff at school. Is that still a thing or are the officers not, SROs not involved with that aspect of the work?
No, that is, that is no longer the practice. I would say too, that some of the incidents that get reported to them, if they're through Minnesota Department of Education, that become very critical. Immediately get a hold of our detective division and they're brought in. And then they usually meet with the student, either off-campus or they meet with their family at home, but you know, they're doing that.
Okay. And that seems like, just for the community's knowledge, that that's a change in your department then? The choice that you all made to differentiate those roles in our community?
Yes, correct.
Okay. Appreciate that. Yeah, thank you.
The last slide really has to do with the contract. And as, as you mentioned at the onset, the contract is written such that as long as, if neither party indicates a desire to either amend the contract or terminate it, it simply rolls over currently as it's written to the fall, to the next year. There was some inquiry made to RPD as to whether there may be interest in a multi-year contract. And Chief Franklin indicated, yes, that would be of interest. And so that's the information that Chair Nathan provided, that there could be a conversation about a multi-year contract. My colleague, John Carlson, had provided information about a number of contract, contracts for service that are multi-year here in the district. So it wouldn't be out of the ordinary to do such a thing. So there would need to be a motion or a resolution to do a multi-year contract should we decide to enter into a contract of more than one year.
Chair Nathan, I know if we're using the term contract versus MOU, random of understanding, for the most part, they're wanting the same thing. We're heavily officially migrated from MOU to contract.
I, I think the MOU that we, you can help me, Director McLaughlin, developed in the past is now combined in one document with the contract, the agreement. Yes. Okay. Do you want to talk about the cost of the contract?
Certainly can. I, the, there's been an increase in cost of law enforcement salaries and benefits. Certainly can, I, it, the, there's been an increase in, uh, cost of, uh, law enforcement salaries and benefits. Percentage wise commensurate with the increase that we've seen in Rochester Public Schools over the last three or four years. So the aggregate increase, uh, as you can see, is on the screen and it's my understanding, though I'm sure lots of officers might like it, as might lots of teachers, they're not expecting that level of increase every year for the next ten years. So this was important, I know from the chief's perspective, to make sure Rochester is competitive for the best officers and can retain the great officers we have relative to other departments, similar to the steps that we've made since I joined Rochester Public Schools, where there has been a very significant increase in compensation and benefits for our employees as well.
So the increases are reflective of increase in the salaries of the SROs, not an increase in our share? Or any additional costs, it's straight up their salaries?
Salaries and benefits.
Reflects our cost, cost sharing of that?
Yes.
Okay. Director Cook.
So is the, I, I'm just, I'm trying to understand the, the posture that we're at with the contract. Has the city or the police department indicated that they intend to terminate the agreement without a change in the financial parameters?
They have not indicated they plan to terminate the agreement, but the standing, longstanding practice of splitting the cost led them to, I think appropriately propose that again this year. So should the board want me to go back and direct that, I certainly could pursue it. And I, I appreciate Chair Nathan kind of asking me to speak to this, I obviously, uh, maybe should have addressed it more proactively. It's not an insignificant increase, but I think it's an understandable increase. As I've said, it's commensurate with the increase we've had and I think that, um, the cost sharing that we have had with our department is something that I think works very well, both sides have skin in the game. I know school districts where they bear the full cost, I know ones where the city bears the majority of the cost, in which case it frankly lessens, even though we have a very effective partnership, it lessens the shared ownership of the strategy. And so that would be the logic, I think, of continuing to pursue this. Obviously, every year I've presented you with a balanced budget proposal to consider in June and I will present another one in slightly more than a month that would incorporate this cost into the budget.
During the break, we were having a discussion about contracts and talking about our teacher settlement and the fact that we don't have, um, large pools of candidates applying for our teacher jobs like we did many, many years ago and how we're trying to attract and retain the, uh, the best possible teaching, um, staff that we can. And, um, I'm sure it's not surprising to learn that RPD is facing the same challenges, that they're not seeing, you know, auditoriums full of people waiting to get on the list of possible candidates, just like, uh, just like we are sometimes watching to make sure, to see if people are actually going to finish an application so we can call them for an interview. We just don't have people lining up and, and they don't either. So I can understand that, um, need for an increase in salary on their end, just like we needed to do.
Just from a contract negotiation perspective, just, I, is, is your recommendation, Dr. Pakel, as, you know, in, in view of the relationship with RPD and so forth, to amend the agreement to reflect the increased, um, amount that, you know, whatever the actual amount is that would roughly split the cost of the officers? Because the, the current language is just calling for a two percent annual increase, so it, we, I, I don't, if I'm understanding correctly, then the superintendent's recommendation to the board is not to do nothing, but is instead to either amend the contract or perhaps explore a multi-year agreement, is that correct?
Yeah, I appreciate that, in retrospect, Director Cook, it's an oversight, the resolution should have been written as you just articulated it and we could update that for your consideration of it at the action level. I also am not making a recommendation at this time about the move to a multi-year contract, though generally speaking, my, my, my perspective on my job is to always give you a recommendation. I'm actually agnostic on that, I know this has been an issue of importance to the board, going, we have a lot of contracts that are two and three-year contracts. I'd be pleased to make a recommendation to you on the multi-year contract too, if it would be something that you'd like me to bring, uh, next week. But yes, I will recommend, I can say for sure, that we continue the fifty-fifty cost sharing of the actual cost of the service. You know, the, one of the things that I have noted since I've been here is that RPD assigns us its best. As soon as our SROs are not in our schools, they're on the street actually, they don't get the summer off. And they choose them for their ability to work with kids and families. And I've always said, were I to ever feel that was not the case, it would dramatically change my strong support for this, but I don't feel that. Were the city or the department to come and suggest changing the percentage, that maybe the school district should do seventy percent? I think I would have to actually think very hard about making that recommendation to you, but because they're recommending we continue the longstanding tradition of evenly splitting the cost, that would be my recommendation and we'll update that language for, uh, your next meeting to reflect that fix. Cause you're right, uh, it's a bit confusing where we suggest no action is needed, but you would need to authorize this expense.
Can I add to that a little bit?
Sure.
I think that, and I, I agree with that, that based on the language, that I think that the number in the contract represents the fifty percent sharing, but that's not explicitly described in here and that the two percent obviously is, is going to need to be updated as well. The other thing I wanted to say about the contract, now that I've looked at it a little bit and to answer Director Barlow's question about the M O U, that I think what is attached in simbly is, I think it was an M O U that we did to increase from the five officers to the six officers for a period of time and that's why we referred to it at times about an M O U, because that required an M O U because it was a change mid-contract. But that the, and the dates of this document seem to reflect that too. But I think the language of this doc, I think what's attached here, um, is the actual contract. We just referred to it as the M O U because it was making that change from five to six. And then I think at one point in time, we had to do another M O U, that might be why we're talking about it that way, because we weren't ready to make a decision on the deadline and we had to extend it a month. So I think all of that has been, um, creating some confusion here. While I'm speaking, I had one more point that I wanted to make, reflecting on, um, what, um, you're saying about retention as well, retention of teachers, retention of officers. One of the things that I personally envisioned, and I think Dr. Garcia and Director Barlow and I talked about this when working with this contract, is a desire to have someone from the school board sit in on the interviews for the SROs. I did mention that to the chief when I talked to him recently and I think that that, not that we want to participate in the decision-making, but just to have eyes on the person that's going to be coming into our schools to make sure it's the good fit with being with our students. But I think that there's some value in, in having us, at least at the table, listening in to make sure that, um, we are confident that a good decision's being made.
Director Marvin.
Two things, um, I actually did, as a board member, did sit in on the interviews and it was amazing not only to meet those who were interviewing, but also to listen to the kinds of questions that were being asked. And I, I'd never felt more heartened and confident in our SROs than I did at that moment, so I appreciated that. If my understanding is that we are, need to come up with an agreement now about what's going to be in the resolution that we'll be voting on. We're talking about multi-year contract, is that two years, three years, I mean, has that been?
Were I to make a recommendation on that, I would recommend, uh, piloting a two-year contract, were I to do that. I think, given that we've only done one year, um, I think that gives the board, um, and by extension, the community that cares about this issue, more limited timeframe than like, you're stuck with me for three years because you gave me a three-year contract. So, um, that would probably be, Dr. Marvin, what I would recommend, should we do that? And, and again, I, I really appreciate this, we will be pleased to, uh, clean up the resolution for you for the next meeting to reflect the, this feedback.
Okay, and then a quick question for you. I'm guessing that being an SRO is, is the best job a police officer could get and also possibly the most exhausting because you're spending all day, every day with adolescents. What, what it be, do you think for, for some, um, some sort of security? If they're thinking, yeah, I'm going to do this and I'm going to, I'm going to get to be the best person I can be with teenagers and I know I'm going to have to invest a lot of extra patience and learning into how that works. Would it make it a little bit easier to have people become SROs if they knew, I've got this at least for two years? I mean, assuming that they do the, the job, rather than one year and then you're?
Yeah, I, I think, you know, you look at, um, Officer Cameron Jackson, uh, with his background, uh, he actually student-teached. So he knew coming into this, when he approached me and was interested in it, he already knew what he was getting into. So he already had that investment and then he networks and works very well with the collaboration with Mayo High School. So I think sometimes we look at these backgrounds, what, which, what the officers have, uh, if they're engaging in the community, if they're volunteering at the Boys and Girls Club. And again, it's just a lot of good background that they bring in that helps out a lot in the schools and they network really good with the, uh, that administration that's in the school as well.
And I would add to that, that when we select, uh, school resource officers, we are looking more in that long-term. We don't want them to be there just for a year, we want them to be there for multiple years because I see our school resource officers, that community policing at its best, right? So they are that community's, that school's, police officer. So we want them to have time to build those foundations, build those relationships within that community, uh, year after year and build on that. So we do see those as long-term investments in the school.
I think to your point about the two-year contract, I think it is a kind of a vote of confidence. I know over the past few years, it's been a little bit nerve-wracking when we come around to this time of year for our SROs to wonder.
Yeah. Director Barlow.
Question for RPS, I mean, RPD, sorry. So, um, this increase as reported in the post bulletin is a twenty-four percent increase, I believe. And is that tied to your, um, labor contract or your recent contract? And how many year contract is that?
So, uh, yes, uh, the increase is, uh, one of the main reasons is, uh, like Superintendent Pakel mentions, our, our fifty-fifty split. With the current contract, SRO contract, um, our labor agreements were not, or the school resource officer agreement was not keeping pace with our, our labor agreements. And then now we have since, uh, new ratified labor agreements, which are for the next three-year term, which had significant market adjustments in them, um, which played greatly into this, uh, increase. And I will, you know, reaffirm what Superintendent Pakel's mentioned about, uh, our commitment to the schools and I can assure you that we will not be coming back to the school board asking to increase that, that fifty-fifty share because we see the added value of having the officers in the school as well. Knowing that, that officer or SRO is going to spend seventy-five to eighty percent of their time in the schools, that shared cost of fifty-fifty, um, we see the added value of, of contributing that to the, to the, to the community, to the school district. On top of that, we have, um, added buy-in and support with Sergeant Blonik here, which is, is actually an additional resource to the school district, which is not governed within your current agreement. So the police department provides that in addition to that, to make sure that your leadership has immediate access to a supervisor at the police department twenty-four hours a day, as he does answer the phone a lot of times late at night, as well as to be that supervision for those SROs that are within the school. We see the strong partnership there and we really see the value that not only this district brings, but that we bring to the district.
Right, so I just wanted to be clear then that, um, uh, for the next three years, we shouldn't anticipate a, uh, increase, but we should also be aware that, uh, as future labor, uh, or, uh, contracts are renewed and negotiated, there may very well to keep our SROs, uh, in step with, uh, uh, your line officers. There may be an additional three years from now. I'm not asking you to project into the future, but it's quite possible three years from now, we could be asked to, um, fully fund, uh, the SROs. I just wanted to make sure that we're not communicating, oh, well, we're good, uh, up until the next contract, yeah, we are good. And, uh, I'm a retired union guy, so I'm more power to the union. I'm not, uh, you know, saying that's a bad thing, I just wanted to make sure we're communicating, uh, you know, above board, everyone knows. And, uh, thank you for what you guys are doing.
Yeah, thank you, yeah, I would just, I would say that, yes, our labor contracts are locked in for the next three years. I would say that this contract cycle was a very, uh, this is the largest market increase I've seen in my career, you know, twenty-five years in law enforcement. So I don't anticipate we would see that again, I think there was a lot of market forces that came into play with that and nor do I anticipate that we would ever come back and ask the school just to, to fully fund the SRO program a hundred percent. We always see that partnership there, the value in having that partnership and splitting the costs.
So to build on that question, the, um, base payment in the current contract, um, would have to be updated to this, um, forty-five thousand nine hundred ninety-three per month, which reflects the increase. But there is language here that says that there will be a two percent cost of living adjustment applied to the monthly payment paid by the district each January first, would that still happen?
Madam Chair, I'd like to look at that, it's very clear there was some homework that we should have done before tonight and so that is very much on my mind to update the language for you.
Okay, great.
So we will do it because that, that was historically in there as a predictable rate of increase. I think to Director Barlow's point, sometimes it's not a typical rate of increase and so let's make sure we work with RPD to come up with some language for you to consider at the next meeting.
If I can, if I can provide some clarity for you as to how we came with that four percent, is that's based off our contractual agreements for our labor union through twenty-twenty-seven? So that's where that four percent came into play?
And then the second piece would be that in the resolution, um, I, I'd like to see, and I'd like to hear other board members' feedback, I'd like to see the total cost of the contract also included in the resolution so that we know the dollar value we're approving. And then the second question for me that goes along with considering a multi-year contract, is the, um, provision for the term, um, this, uh, tradition we've had of having this contract automatically renew unless we provide written notice of termination. In the event we want to change the contract language, now we have to have a resolution and take action. I think this board has committed to having a agenda item on the SRO contract every year because we've said that we want to see the law enforcement data and we want to discuss, have a discussion as to whether we want to terminate the contract. And I'm wondering if the board would like to have this, um, be like other contracts. When the contract comes up in term, we have a conversation about whether we want to have a subsequent contract as opposed to this automatic renewal if we don't take action to cancel it.
Well, Madam Chair, I think that is a great idea and that in past iterations of this, uh, contract, it wasn't actually tied to the labor contract. It, uh, we now have that awareness and so I think we have, um, every reason to, um, support your, uh, recommendation. Additionally, uh, any ongoing concern, should there be any, which would arise, uh, the superintendent and Chief Franklin, I'm sure, would have communication. And if there were anything that rose to the level of a need to perhaps tweak or modify, it would be brought to our attention at that point in time.
I would add to that discussion based on the work we did earlier, is that we probably want to have that renewal time at a springtime so that if there is any time that theoretically one would want to terminate either side, that we would be able to have plans for the following year.
Right, so keep it on this, keep it on that May first schedule.
I think that makes sense, yes.
Right.
To give us a few months before expiration.
Director Whitehorn.
So I can, um, just from what I, from what I'm understanding is that there's just really some wording concerns in how it's worded. I would say I'm not a hundred percent opposed to an automatic renewal, but I would say maybe we can add language about, you know, the annual review in the spring. I, I mean, I think that everybody should have a way out of a, out of a contract, but if there are no concerns, I see no issue with it. there are no concerns, I see no issue with it, with it renewing without a vote, per se.
And I think that's the question that we're, we're putting forward, is the current contract, should no board member, let's say we had this discussion, there wasn't any changes to make in the contract, we could say, thank you very much, and, and the agenda item, without taking any action, versus saying that every time we renew this contract, there has to be a board vote to affirmatively renew the contract. But if there's any changes to the contract, right, like if there's a cost of living change, or if there's change to any language, I would think that the board would want to take a vote to approve the contract, and under the way this is worded, we would have to take a vote to terminate the contract before we modify the contract? Kind of take a new vote?
I mean, we, we can propose a new contract that, that specifies whatever term we want, and it can call for canceling the previous, there's nothing that would prevent us from doing that, but I, if we're, if we're going to go to a two-year agreement, I think getting rid of the evergreen, automatic renewal is fine, I don't really feel strongly about it, I could envision that actually working to RPS's advantage in some scenarios, but I don't feel strongly about it. I wouldn't, if we were going to retain the evergreen or automatic renewal language, I wouldn't want that to be for more than one year, though. So those are my thoughts on it.
And the superintendent, I believe, said he was going to work on the language, and perhaps he's heard what we have to say regarding this, and if he's got to go and he's captured our concerns, we could probably...
As long as board members have...
I would still like to see a review, though. I, I would, I mean, even if we're not going to vote, I'd still would like to see language that does require some accountability of a review.
Well, Director Whitehorn, I don't think we need to put that into our contract with RPD, though, but I, I think as a board, we should absolutely be committing to that, and if, if the contract terminated with a two-year term, we would be forced to do it, because we'd have to talk about it in order to enter into a new agreement.
And I think this board has made clear in the past that we want to see that, this annual conversation happen, so. Anything else?
No, I, I thank you, I feel like I have some good guidance, and I, I think I can think of some ways to make sure that that, you're confident about that review as well. So I think we can bring you a good proposal. This essentially would align this contract with every other contract that we have, which is time-limited, and then you got to re-up, or the contract is done, but I think that, I think we can work together in pretty short order to bring you some of this additional information to consider next time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next agenda item is 8.2, Performance Measures and Skip 2.0 Process. This is a prep-for-action item tonight, and the board discussed this at the April 15th study session, and is scheduled, the board's scheduled to take action at the May 6th meeting. Superintendent Pikel.
Thank you, Chair Nathan, and board members. You heard a lot from me last week at the study session, and you had a long memo from me, which we have spent some time considering in the week since we talked last, and some of the feedback that you gave us last time was really quite influential in bringing the proposal that's before you. I'm going to attempt to be brief, because we talked about this a lot, and I want to save the time for discussion. Two points, I think, emerged at your study session, and they've emerged in several meetings that I've had in schools this week, including one at Mighty Oaks and one at Riverside today, that I really want to begin. The first really critical point is how do we frame the skip, the School Continuous Improvement Plan? And as I talked with folks who were at your study session and who are in our schools, I realized in some cases, people are thinking the skip is everything. It is the master plan for everything that happens in a school. It is the guidebook to every subject area, every grade level, every aspect of school. And very importantly, that is not what a skip can or should be. A school improvement plan is a targeted strategy to address a limited number of areas where we need to get better. Maybe it's because we have low performance, or maybe it's because we have solid performance that we really want to improve. So skips do not and cannot address everything that schools do. So there are many aspects of our schools that we will continue to be attentive to that are not going to be spoken to in a skip. A skip is a tool to frankly, if you have to put it at its most essential level, address your biggest problems or your biggest challenges, but it's not all-inclusive. The second point, it has to do with the measurement piece, which looms large if we're going to be doing serious continuous improvement, which is that we have based the proposal for the performance measures in particular that is before you now, on the measures we realistically will have in the next three years. I have made the mistake in my career multiple times of writing plans that had goals that you can't measure, which doesn't mean, to the point I just made a moment ago, that we shouldn't work on those goals, but let's not pretend that we have measures for them. They don't belong in a skip process if we actually can't measure them. This is the place where we do the continuous improvement work. So very briefly, in the resolution that you have, you can see that there's a set of design principles that are there. There are a list of performance measures that I will come back to in a moment, that I'm proposing would guide our school improvement work for at least the next three years, and also guide the design of our strategic plan, starting next fall. There is an articulation of who the skip team members will be, and as board members know, it was a subject of significant discussion last week, as we heard about tonight. I am not recommending that parents be required to be on the skip team. I appreciate it, the point that's been made many times, in fact, I love the, the attention that some in our stakeholder community have given to the skip teams. And you'll see on the next point, I am recommending that we have a required opportunity for input and feedback that is part of our skip process. The reason ultimately I'm concluding not to require parental or caregiver involvement at this time, is that to my knowledge, right now, on none of our skip teams do we have full, integrated parent participants. And I think before we mandate something, we ought to try something. Skip teams are professional dialogues. At Riverside today, we had a deep discussion of the FastBridge data, its meaning, its use, and the administration of the test. If you don't speak as you speak, someone would have had to translate for someone else there. Now, is that impossible? No, but it would change that a lot. In addition, as happened today at Riverside and Mighty Oaks, those teams meet during the workday, and to try and have teams meeting at alternative times would be a huge expense and a burden on our teachers and other staff. And then finally, the point, which again is, is well-taken, no single staff member represents all staff, no teacher represents all teachers, no education support professional represents all education support professionals, but they do have vehicles within the school to reach out to their colleagues. They have tangible ways to talk to the other teachers, the other ESPs. A parent who is there as a volunteer parent does not have a realistic way to get feedback from all parents in the school, and so there is another important difference. Now, I want to strongly encourage parent and caregiver involvement on skip teams. I believe some of our schools will embrace that possibility, and I believe as we learn over the implementation of Skip 2.0, how that goes, we might get to a point where that requirement makes sense. But I do think we ought to try it before we mandate it, not making the mistake that they made with the federal No Child Left Behind law, which was mandating everyone to do something no one had ever done before, which did not prove successful. That said, I am recommending an explicit requirement that parents and caregivers have an opportunity to learn about and provide feedback on their school skip every year, and that there are ways that I'm sure our schools can devise opportunities to do that. That is not something that is happening in, I think it's safe to say, most of our schools right now, and so that would still be a significant step forward. The needs assessment component of the skip process is one that is a very important addition to the process that we don't have now, and I think to the point Director Cook that you made in the study session, we realized that the self-assessments that we proposed to build of key structures in our schools, multi-tiered systems of support, professional learning communities, really were not quantitative goals to achieve through the process, they're tools for the needs assessment. So we've moved that third category from the dashboard, if I can call it that, into the needs assessment. It didn't fall off, but now it's part of the needs assessment, not what our schools would actually be aiming to approve over time. The components of the skip, I'll come to again very briefly in just a moment, it has not changed since last week. One thing that we've also clarified, based on your study session, very helpful point, schools will have a lot of autonomy to setting their intended improvement goals, their initiatives, their action steps, unless they demonstrate sustained low performance or downward performance, in which case we will step in and we'll say, I'm sorry, you don't get to choose your goals, initiatives, and action steps, because Houston, we have a problem here. And so there's an autonomy that goes with progress, that is a result of our discussion in your study session last week. The plan remains a three-year plan. Critically, we need to get to the point that where our improvement goals proceed developing our budget and staffing plan. That's why it's going to take a year to make this shift, because you got to have the strategy set before the budget, and it's going to take us the 2025, 2026 school year to do that. We've tightened up the approval process, it continues to be the skip team voting to approve the skip, that principals will be responsible for the school budgets, but skip teams will have an opportunity to review and provide feedback on that budget and staffing plan, although it will be the principal's job to determine that budget and staffing plan. We have articulated that we need to step up our support that we provide from the central office for school skip teams. In particular, we need to build experts in every one of those performance measure areas who can support skips, and then we have some general commitment to board monitoring of the process that will be there. So to just highlight two very brief components of that strategy that you saw summarized there, that's where we've landed on my recommendation for the dashboard, the performance measures. Once again, back to my first point, is that everything we care about in Rochester Public Schools? Absolutely not. Are those key areas for us to continually improve upon? I do think so. I am recommending that we embrace the five essentials framework of ambitious instruction, effective leaders, collaborative teachers, supportive environment, and involved families. One other change from last week is we don't necessarily name the 5E survey as the measurement tool, I think that is most likely, but in talking with Dr. Ruck and Gretchen Acasio, our project management coordinator, we've realized there may be some other ways of measuring that framework that we should look at, so we're asking you to embrace the framework as opposed to the specific survey. And then finally, the basic structure of the skip has not changed from what we talked about in the study session. Those performance measures that you saw a moment ago would be our North Star, our dashboard, schools would set their improvement goals based on their data, which are the areas we need to work on? Is it reading? Is it math? Is it family engagement? Is it leadership? Is it our graduation rates? Then they would select their improvement initiatives, we're suggesting no more than three, because capacity is a critical thing to keep in mind, and they determine their action steps, and we will deter, we'll provide schools with progress management information on an ongoing basis that they can use to track progress toward those performance measures. And then critically off to the side there, when principals submit their budgets and staffing plans, they will need to show that the improvement initiatives and the action steps of their skips are adequately resourced in their budgets and staffing plans, though that will be the responsibility of the principal as opposed to the skip team. And so Madam Chair, with that, you have the resolution before you.
Board members, questions? Director Whitehorn.
So, and I don't mean to beat a dead horse with the parent involvement part here, and I, I hear, I've, I've heard everything, I've heard both sides, so my question to how you currently have it is, how will you create the transparency? So I know we are kind of making the assumption that parents may not be available, that stuff, you know, which I think is a big assumption, or language, but my, my concern is that if we do it this way, how will parents be notified that these meetings are happening? Because if we're encouraging parent involvement and not, and not mandating it, as you say, how will we be assured that parents are aware, for the parents that do want to be involved, how will they know when and where these meetings are taking place beforehand, if they do want to, you know, call in to work or whatever, do whatever they need to do because it's important to them? Will we have some kind of way to make sure that is implemented? And furthermore, to what you were speaking about, the language and those things, if we know that we're implementing a system that can be difficult for our community to understand, what is our design around that? Will we, you know, host a town hall or something? Because you, what I'm hearing is you want the parents to be involved, and I'm hearing that there are barriers that may make it difficult for parents to be effectively involved, but I, I'm not really hearing how we're going to solve that, right? So I, I understand that this is something that can grow, and we don't want to bite off more than we can chew, and I, I see both sides, but how are we addressing those concerns? So it sounds like we have the time concern of the time of they were doing the, the meetings, but then there's this larger concern of whether or not parents will understand education legally is, right, understand the language that is being used so that they can be effective. So I guess from my standpoint, in order for me to be comfortable in approving this, I would like to know what does that look like? How are we going to ensure that the parents that are able to be involved are able to, actually able to be involved, and it doesn't become this closed meeting where now there's just a memo sent out? How, how are we going to keep that open for the parents that want to be involved?
Superintendent?
Yeah, thank you, Director Whitehorn. The resolution before you really maps out the highest-level strategy, and we would absolutely need to flesh out all of those specifics going forward. So not just on this point of parent involvement, but on every one of these points, the resolution really is give us our marching orders. So the language that I gave you is encourage but not required to include parents and caregivers. I'm authentic in that encouragement, so the, the thing I'm not recommending is mandating. But then it says, skip teams should be required to provide parents and caregivers with an overview of the school's skip, and invite questions and feedback from parents and caregivers about the skip. And so how we do that could be fleshed out, and we could certainly come back to the board with detailed proposals. At this point, I'm simply recommending that you require that, and then there's lots of different ways that we could bring back options for schools to do it. I'd want to engage parents and school staff in talking about the most effective ways to do it. I could hypothesize some of my own ideas at this point, but right now, we're asked, the recommendation is to require the input from parents, and then I gave some examples that have come up in terms of, you know, open meetings, written feedback, things like that. That could be a very good subject of ongoing board discussion, of if you approve this, okay, now how are we going to implement it? And we want to have some specificity, because not just on the parent involvement piece, but on the needs assessment, on the other things, we're asking for your high-level direction as opposed to all of your specific, all the specific action steps at this point.
And I, excuse me, I was just asking for clarification, because I know we're saying not mandate, but then you do have the language of requirement, so it sounds like mandate, but it's not.
Well, no, the mandate would be input, so there's a mandate for input, absolutely. The mandate would not be you must have parents on your formal skip team. That's the only, so there's a mandate for parent input on the skip. Now, so if we have a school where the PTA, for instance, or just a, a parent is saying, I have no way to learn about or contribute to my school's skip, that's at odds with this mandate. Like, we have to go to the principal and say, you have to have authentic ways for your parents to, parents and caregivers to contribute to the skip, and we would need to flesh that out with them and say, what does that mean? So there would be a mandate for information and input. Right now, I just think it's a, and, and the feedback from school principals in particular, but also teachers and others on skip teams, was the mandatory membership on the team seemed premature to the folks we've gotten feedback on.
Director Cook.
Well, I, I, I like a lot of, of what I'm seeing here, I think that we're on a good path generally. Couple further questions that I've had, is, is there an expectation that lead principals would be members of the skip teams themselves, or not?
Yes, it, it should say that, we'll, we'll clarify that.
Okay.
Yes.
That's useful to know. And then the, as far as the membership of the skip teams, we're, we're really, this, this process would delegate the recruitment and selection to the lead principals themselves, which makes sense to me, if the lead principal is the one that is going to be... which makes sense to me if the lead principal is the one that is going to be charged with implementing the budget that reflects the priorities. One thought that I had, and I kind of wanted to just surface this for my colleagues on the board and for you, Superintendent, I think it might make sense here to call for inviting the participation of parents and then leave it to the lead principal to, I mean, because the way I read the proposal here is that we are stipulating three specific teacher roles, and then the lead principal. And then the lead principal is going to be charged with recruiting whomever for the, whomever they think will be best situated to provide the type of input that they'd like to see from the skip team. Doesn't even really need to be a member of the school community. I can think of some folks at some of my kids' schools that aren't current teachers, but maybe former teachers, that would probably be great members of skip teams. So I think it would be, I think it could be a good thing to call for, even at this level of kind of abstract guidance, explicitly calling for inviting or soliciting potential members from amongst parents in each school, and then delegating to the lead principal to determine whether any of them are particularly good candidates that they'd like to recruit and select. But I wanted to see if others had reaction to that, so.
The one point I'd add is, and not to your suggestion about the parent point, I need to think about how that might work in practice. Because you don't want to have a principal say, "Well, I'm going to invite you because the district made me invite you, but I don't think that I should have one, so I'm not really going to put anyone on," I mean, just to play it out all the way. But we do have here, each year before the start of school year, principals be required to submit the names of their skip team members to the superintendent, who will work with central office leaders to review the list and ensure the required perspectives are represented on the team. So there will be accountability for making sure these are authentic teams that reflect those perspectives. And should the board take a step to add any other perspective to the teams, we would ensure that those perspectives are represented there as well.
Director McLaughlin?
Thinking about the parent caregiver involvement and the comments to the board before the, at the beginning of the meeting today, it seemed to me that it might be an issue of timing and perspective, that difference between perhaps the skip team getting their draft ready that the skip team hasn't voted on yet, but that draft might be what to present to the school community for feedback, rather than waiting until its draft is voted on, principal's done the budget, we're all set, and then doing a presentation about, "Here's what we decided."
That's a great point.
That I think it's the timing and the perspective of it.
A revision to that effect. That's the intent, and you're right, it doesn't say that clearly.
Yeah, I think it could be at the end of the sentence about inviting question and feedback from the parents and caregivers about the skip prior to skip team voting.
That's the intent, and you're right, it doesn't say that. So you don't want to say, "Look what we did. It's all done."
Right.
Yep. Great point.
Director Barlow?
Yeah. So there is, yes, indeed, a mandate for information and input for parents and caregivers. Director McLaughlin, I appreciate her comment. I simply, I have served on a number of advisory committees or served as a member of the community who was simply informed as to the decisions being made and as a courtesy, input was solicited. But, and you just made the statement, decisions weren't necessarily made, but it's been my experience in the past, though, that oftentimes the decisions are made, and it's a courtesy being extended to, "Oh yeah, we're supposed to inform our parents and caregivers, so we're going to call or convene a meeting to do that." And their due diligence has occurred. The parents and caregivers are made aware of what's been already decided. I guess my concern, and I don't want to be repetitious, though I am, it seems like Director McLaughlin has already suggested that there be some mechanism that allows for input prior to the final decision made. The only additional concern I have is that it's left up to the purview of each individual principal to decide what that might look like. It's my view, and it seems like there is more than one or two or three of us on the board who would like to maybe see that be more than just a, well, leave it up to the individual principal. I think that it would be, carry more weight if indeed that was part of the expectation that principals will. Other than the Bible, I'm not big on the use of the word "shall." But however you would think would be appropriate for, you know, communicating to the principals that there is some sincere effort and desire on the part of the board and parents. You know, and I'll end with that. I think you've heard, you've sensed, even this is a response to our study session. And I think we're getting close there, and I will be excited to see what the final result will be.
And one more piece of feedback?
I want to make sure everybody who hasn't talked yet has a chance to talk.
You're going to stay on the same subject. I just wanted to briefly respond to that subject, but if you're going to comment on that subject.
Yeah, just from a parent perspective, I think, I like the idea of giving some flexibility because I think about PTA at the elementary level, there's a captive audience of 30 people. PTA at Mayo High School?
Doesn't exist.
Five, or doesn't exist, right?
Doesn't exist.
So that's where, I think, our schools are so diverse that I think we need to think about what's the most effective way to do it, and that it's not going to be cookie cutter for, each school's not going to be the same.
I would just, first of all, let me commit to see if we can bring you some language to this point that is still flexible but a bit more specific next time. So let me, one thing I'll just say, having in my previous lives at the University of Minnesota and at Search Institute, done a lot of work around parent engagement, the way to get a lot of parents and caregivers there, so not just the ones who will come to anything, God love them, is to have an event where their kids are doing something, where their kids are performing, delivering a student-led conference, whatever. Parent ball goes way up. What's really powerful is if you can provide the info and get the feedback at an event like that, but you have to be really efficient. Because parents who don't want to sit in on committee meetings, they'll come to something where their kids are participating. And can you get authentic engagement at a setting like that? Because then you've got people who will make time in their busy lives to come to something that involves their, that's when you want the broad engagement. Then there's, sometimes you want the deep engagement, with people who are willing to sit through meetings and stuff. But when you can get a community event, like we have, go to Elton Hills, it's jammed. And I talked about this a little bit with staff there. They haven't generally leveraged their incredible turnouts for parents' nights to also get feedback on issues of school improvement. Nobody wants to sit down and hear a big PowerPoint at a parent, but they have everybody there. And are there ways you can actually begin to get the parent and caregiver feedback at an event like that that is teeming with those things? You have to, that's something we have to support our schools at getting good at, but it can be done. It can be done in a way that, you know, you say, "Hey, there's three big priorities we're thinking about for our school." We have a quick poll that you can, you know, fill out, and you watch a short video, and then suddenly you have a kind of a gut-level feel of what a very diverse group of your parents are thinking. And so it's just the kind of thing that I'm hoping this process will drive as we go forward.
Director Whitaker?
I was just going to say, just because, you know, just a little out of the weeds and a little out of the box, you know, I think we're looking at this like per school, but I think there is an opportunity to look at this from a community engagement perspective. You know, we're meeting people where they already are, you know. We keep talking about, like, reinventing things, but, you know, we have lots of opportunities in our communities where parents are, you know, where parents show up, the back-to-school event, some of the events that were listed in the earlier presentation. You know, those are places that RPS could be present and get some of that engagement. You know, I think some of it is also, and speaking from a parent, is sometimes we're just not aware. I think we make the assumption that parents don't want to be involved, but they really just don't know. And they haven't had the conversations to either understand the importance or what exactly it is, or to what Director Barlow says, parents that have been involved felt like, "I showed up. I sat at these meetings, and I was just here to check a box." So, you know, there's a little bit of distrust with people getting involved on these boards and committees, even people that have done tons of them, because they feel like, well, they already decided. They just wanted, you know, to get my quote and say, "Hey, we spoke to the community, and this is how they felt," right? But we're kind of not engaged until the end. And I don't think we want to do that with this process. So I just think it's worth us, you know, looking outside of the box to see, how can we get that information to parents? And how can we make sure we keep that process, you know, transparent? As to Director Cook's point, our school system is full of all different kinds of parents, you know, retired. We have grandparents, you know, it's just not, you know, the typical mom and dad. You know, there are a lot of community members that can probably offer very valuable feedback to some of these meetings. So I just think we should just, as you said, you reword it, but I think if we were looking at this from a broader scope, it would maybe assist us in how we are looking at this parent involvement and engagement piece. But if we're looking at it per school and per principal's engagement, it does become more complex. But I think if we look at it at a broader scope, we are underestimating the amount, the power of people, you know. So if the information gets out there to the right community partners, you'd be surprised the outcome that we can have and the effective outcome that we can have. But if we're only looking at it from what this one school and one principal could do, then yes, we wouldn't be able to effectively.
So building on the parent and caregiver conversation, I don't think it needs to be in this level of approval, but when we're considering the implementation, I'd like it to be clear that it is the district and the school administration that is taking on the mandatory parent meetings and parent engagement, that, and that resources of the district will be provided to help support it so that a principal can't, for example, put it on the PTA to organize it, or another group of parents. And that the district would make things available like translators, or, you know, if there might be any family engagement funds to help with funding. You know, some of our most successful family engagement events involve, you know, refreshments. And again, I don't want it to be put on a community, we could ask for community partners perhaps to help us with it, but I want it to be clear, this is a school outreach on a school continuous improvement plan, not something that, you know, an outside organization is organizing. The other piece is, I think we've got some great experiences from our CAPE workshops and these family engagement events that have been done at schools, either by the school itself or in partnerships with PTAs that we can learn from in terms of how to activate that parent perspective. But my personal feeling is that the beauty of this plan is that it is school-specific. And that I think sometimes when we talk about district initiatives, it's hard to get people to get feedback because they want, how does it affect me? What's in it for me? And these skip plans, it should be the responsibility of the parent, or I'm sorry, it should be the responsibility of the principal to educate the parents on how their child's experience is going to be enhanced and improved if they take these steps successfully. And I think that's part of the buy-in that we'll get from parents, is if the principals can deliver that message effectively. It's important information for parents to have, but that's, I think, the important hook to get parents to then give their feedback, if they understand that their feedback will really drive their students' everyday experience.
And I guess what I was saying for the community outreach was more so letting parents know that it's there, right? I know that it needs to be school-specific, but my concern is that a lot of parents don't even know, right? So I think I was thinking more so in making the community aware that this is a process that's happening at each school, and then the schools can, you know, continue their process, but in making sure that we're being transparent so that the parents that do want to be involved know to contact the school or know to keep a lookout for, you know, those meetings and things.
I think the other piece of the parent caregiver involvement we haven't covered is the requirement that the skip team will review the data from the surveys and consider refinement of the skip to address weaknesses, particularly for parent engagement.
Yeah, it's a, the five E parent engagement data is very powerful. It'll show you where parents are not feeling engaged in a way that's often not comfortable. And we will have, if we do adopt that survey, as we talked about in the study session, that was another idea that I didn't think merited here, but it was not lost on me, we'll have a required participation rate for that survey so that we are certain that it is actually getting sufficiently representative, that it is sufficiently representative of our parent population. I think Peter said it was 20% in Chicago. That actually, I thought, that's not a bad percentage statistically. I think we could go a bit above that, actually. But that was another good idea that came out of your study session that we would certainly bake into the plan.
And one other question about the requirement. So the skip is developed for three years, and then every year, the skip continues to meet to update the plan, correct?
Yes, the skip team.
So would the requirement for this parent engagement, parent outreach happen every year, or only on the three-year cycle?
No, the intent was that it would be every year. Make that clear if it's not clear.
Anything else?
The one thing I should probably just say, because it actually may be one of the things, I know we shared this with you, and we shared some of the feedback that came from interviews. When I, my first year here, we tried skip plans that were something like where we're headed for in 2026-27, which is to say they were open-ended and schools could do it. And the reason we moved away from that, our schools produced skip plans that had 18 initiatives. Nothing was eliminated. It was everything, and therefore, they was, it was not implementable. There was almost no exception to that. The hard part of this is choosing a limited number of priorities. That's where the hard work on the team becomes, of course, all of it matters. And you go, and you have to look at the data, you have to get the stakeholder feedback, and then you have to say, "We have three big things," you know, maybe four. And so that's one of the reasons why this process does need to have some control to it, because if you get a bunch of people who care about kids together, myself included, we'll all dream big and we'll have so many priorities. And this process has got to focus on a limited number of really critical objectives. And then the schools have to stick to them for three years, because we all know the deep change doesn't happen if we keep switching plans year after year. So I mentioned that, Chair Nathan, because, yes, they would be doing an update in between their new skip plan, but what they wouldn't be doing is saying, "Okay, parents and caregivers, should we completely get rid of our goal?" They're saying, "We're in year one of our goal around math, and here's how it's going. What are your kids seeing?" But we're not switching goals until we get to the next plan. We need to sort of be tight in that regard.
Sorry, I have a few more questions, not on this subject. On the performance measures, you said that it's going to be reported in the eight racial and ethnic groups. Why not English learners, special education?
Yeah, it should say, that was a good catch. It should say the demographic groups that the Minnesota School Report Card utilizes. So it would be, we now have eight that the state uses for racial and ethnic groups, but it would include students with disabilities, multilanguage learners, free and reduced price lunch, or whatever the state comes up with for that. I think those are the other biggies, so, yeah.
Is there any value in gender?
Yes, there's value in gender. I don't mean to suggest that I'm.
And reporting, given that. And reporting, given that, and what you talked about.
Yes, there's value in gender. You know, usually, that's, yes, we're seeing striking differences between genders, so we'll take a look at that, yeah.
And then on our board work, um in element eleven, um should we make it clear, since the board is approving this and we're we're giving uh the authority to the superintendent how to implement it, should we, does it need to be clearer that we are not, the board never approves individual school skip plans or budgets? But we approve the budgets as they are integrated into the district budget annually. I think that's important as somebody looks at this document down the line and says, well, when is the board going to approve the skip plans? Or am I just being too neat?
I mean, we, my recommendation is not that you approve the skip plans, you're approving the performance measures, you're being updated on the skip plans. I do think that I will bring you uh more specifics on when we would be giving a school less autonomy because they're having problems on, I think there's, the language is sufficient here for now, but I think I would define low performance or downward trend, so you can look at that. So there's a lot we would bring you to flesh out. I guess you could make it explicit if somebody thought that you were doing it, but it, I don't think it says here that you would. You do approve the budget and the staffing plan in the aggregate every year. So it all rolls up to what John and the team bring you in June, so that's for sure. The skip plans right now, you're right, you wouldn't be approving individual plans.
I'm just wondering if we should add a line to element eleven that kind of wraps it up, that says the school board will approve a budget that reflects the budget and staffing plans of the individual schools.
Sure.
And to what you were saying about the autonomy, that was going to be my next question, is some of the other steps are worded very specifically as to what those measurements are, you know, as how many uh skip team members need to be on each team. But when it comes to autonomy, it's very, very vague, you know, as to what, what would, as you, like you just said, what would make us uh put a school in position where you would be taking over? Um so if we're looking at this uh document for longevity, um it could be interpreted lots of ways, right? I can just see that schools could say, oh, well, we're, like you said, we're working on it, which could take several years or what have you to get into a better spot. But how do we differentiate a school that is, you know, taking a big goal, that is a three-year goal from a school that's just not, um, you know, just not making gains in whatever it is that they need to be doing? Like, what will be the metrics for us to determine that a school is needing us to walk in versus not?
I I think, well.
I don't, I mean, we're not going to be approving the skip plan, and I I don't think it's up to us to make that determination whether schools are, that that's a an administrative decision, I think, that they would have to be the ones, and Dr. Pecalyn uh would be determining that.
I I think, school by school, yes, I do think I would want to bring the board more specificity to get your feedback on the broad criteria for that. I think for this board, at this point, to be approving this strategy and saying, yes, we are going to empower our school communities, but we will step in if we're not heading in the right direction, is a very meaningful statement at this high level. And then I agree, we need to bring more specificity to the process as we go forward.
Well, I mean, maybe to state the obvious, but this board or any future board doesn't need to give itself permission to exercise general control over the school district. We, you know, a year from now, regardless of what we say here, three-year commitment and all, we could totally upend this, there isn't anything binding about this. But I I think we are all committed to this strategy and that's that's a good thing, but I don't think we need to specify anything further than that. It's sort of inherent, so.
Okay, we will continue this conversation next week, thank you. Next meeting. Um our next item is a prep for action, policy committee recommendations, March twentieth, twenty twenty five. Uh these were the recommendations um that were first briefed at the last regular meeting. And this is the second of, second briefing, and the policy will be on the consent agenda on May sixth. Does anybody have any questions or comments that were raised in the interim? Hearing none. We move on to item eight point four, approval of start times for twenty twenty five, twenty six, and this is planned to be an action item on May sixth. Superintendent.
Thank you, Chair Nathan. Um as you can see, our Chief of Ministry of Officer John Carlson is coming up. And I'm gonna, with uh your permission, Chair Nathan, I'm gonna ask John to give you an overview and answer any questions you may have on the the issue that we are asking you to take action on, which is a tweak, I believe that's a fair word, in our start times. After John has done, Madam Chair, I'd like to ask Mona Perkins, our chief academic officer, to come up and give you a brief overview of an issue that I know you've heard about regarding our elementary school special area schedules, art, music, media, and FIED. That is purely for informational purposes, I want to give the board an update on, ask Mona to give an update on where we are with that important work. It's related insofar as it has to do with time and schedules. This is the issue before you that we will be asking you to vote on. And then once we've uh adequately addressed your questions with this issue, I'd like to have Mona come up and give you an update on that issue. Just because we will be announcing some things in the coming days and I'd like the board to hear an update first.
Okay.
Thank you, Superintendent Pecalyn, Chair Nathan. So what I want to describe to you is indeed a tweak to start times for, and end times for next year. What's really driving this is that um we have learned a lot in the first three quarters of implementing these start times for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year uh that were decided upon in June of two thousand and twenty-three. Um we have learned some additional things throughout the winter, um as far as some drive times of some specific um DWO transfer hubs. And um what we're finding is we need about seven to nine minutes for a few of these deliveries of students to keep the whole system running on time. That's causing us needing to tweak the schedule a little bit. We also wanted to uh tell you that um when we were here in November, myself and my colleagues, we talked about needing to uh drop down the ending time to two ten PM, that is not shown on the slide right now for our district-wide option schools of Longfellow, Lincoln, Riverside, et cetera. Uh we're able to actually add that five minutes back next year and even add another five minutes to that. So they'll have ten minutes more of instruction at those schools next year. To do that, we also uh need to make a small adjustment at Bamber Valley, Churchill, Elton, Falwell, Gibbs, Hoover, so on and so forth, that is shown there. So what we're proposing for next year is a start time of seven fifty, so that's about five minutes earlier. And then going to two twenty-five at the first um grouping of elementary schools. And then having an end time at two fifteen at the second grouping of elementary schools. And that adds back the five minutes that was um adjusted this year and adds another five minutes to it for next year. Uh at our middle schools, this is all just a trickle-down effect then, when you make a small little change even by five minutes, we need to adjust all the way through the system. So our middle schools, we are proposing an eight forty to three twenty school day. And our high schools, it would be eight fifty-five to three thirty-five. We are not proposing any change to Phoenix Academy, Rail, or the Middle School ALC. The High School ALC, um we are adapting uh that time as well to nine oh five to three fifteen. And that's direct feedback from our um ALC and our high school principals and really making sure that we get those students that need transportation from the ALC up to Century, JM, and Mail, so they can catch the buses home uh with their um neighborhood peers. And then we're not proposing any changes to the preschool program times, those are the names there. And that's uh the gist of the quick summary.
Director Marvin.
Two things quickly, have you gotten any pushback at all from secondary schools about the five-minute shift?
We did on a earlier version when we had it extending to three forty-five. We went back to the drawing board and um worked with it a little bit more, we'll find, we were able to find five minutes in there on one end and then five on another, and we got it down to three thirty-five as tight as we can get.
Okay, and then um, maybe I'm saying this wrong, but it seems to me that Bamber Valley and those schools will have fifteen minutes more. And Bishop and that group will have five minutes more, so it's, and because of transportation.
So one thing I did, this slide doesn't accurately reflect, what it reflects is what was voted to as approval on June sixth of twenty twenty-three. It doesn't include that five minutes we had to shave off in the middle of the school year. I didn't put that in there to, maybe I should have, but I thought maybe it might be a little confusing. But we're adding back that five and then another five.
Okay, got it.
But to do that, we also can extend to the benefit of the other schools another few minutes there.
Can I just build on that for a second? So it looks like um the DWO schools have an extra ten minutes. But do the Bishop Franklin, Gage, and Pinewood gain five minutes?
Yes, they are gaining.
Did they go to two-ten too? Last year?
This year Bishop does not, Bishop, that would be a new change coming for Bishop um due to a movement of a, of a, or in addition, actually, of a newcomers program at Bishop, um and then making, needing to make some student transfers there.
So the only ones that were pushed back to two-ten after the June sixth, twenty twenty-three vote were the district-wide option schools?
Correct, then, and Pinewood as a result of being in Longfellow Building, we did end those at the same time. I wanted to make it very clear that Longfellow and Pinewood operate on the same start and stop time.
Okay, but the net gain in minutes is fifteen for those in the first box.
That is correct.
Five for Bishop Franklin and Gage and ten for Lincoln, Longfellow, Pinewood, Riverside, and Washington.
I want to say Franklin and Gage are already at the two-ten, but I would need to verify. I think it was just Bishop is the one change.
Okay. Director McLaughlin.
When I looked at this, I just want to make sure I understand, because I originally thought it might be some sort of typo. But does this reflect that the first group has more instruction time than the second group of elementary?
That's correct.
Okay, how do we explain that?
We explain that by we are operating within the constraints of what we have, and we know that this is an issue. Because what I can say is the middle group or the second group of elementary schools is getting the same amount of instruction as they got. Uh the the minutes are exactly the same as they were up through the twenty twenty dash twenty twenty-one school year. But we also know uh that this is something that we need to talk about and it probably be addressed in the next strategic plan. Superintendent may or may not want to talk about that.
It's gonna be fun. Everyone's gonna love it.
Um and then I I guess I was thinking about, is is it related to location in some degree?
It's completely related to trying to move students from a district-wide or a, yeah, basically a district-wide program to an attendance area school so they can catch the same buses with their attendance area peers that go to the attendance area school. And trying to not add additional routes to keep the transportation as efficient as possible, as we were also directing in twenty twenty-four to make sure that we did that.
Got it.
I I I don't want to be flip it, we we have to, we have to do some hard work on that problem, it's, there's no simple solution to it. The hub structure that we implemented for the district-wide option schools has served some important purposes. There are some consequences that were, one of which we're seeing in this instance.
I have kind of a related question, not to complicate things, but does it somewhat relate to the invol, the enrollment and where those kids come from in the district-wide schools?
No, um because they're delivered um to their attendance area school about fifteen-ish minutes or so early. Um and then they catch a shuttle then or another, a bus just takes them, they all split up and go to their district-wise from there.
I guess my point is, is using Lincoln as the example, what if none of the kids from that hub, or what if none of the kids from that hub area attend Lincoln? Would that, would that not happen ever, or would that change any of this?
I believe we have students using from any of the hubs where we're, where there's eligibility are being used this year, so.
And I guess my point is, is if that changed and that for whatever reasons, one geographic area didn't have any kids going to that district-wide, would that free it up more time or not?
Possibly, but we we know that we have multiple routes that are taking seven to nine minutes, so it would be more than just one area that would have to drop off some ridership to compress it down to about a five-minute time frame, which is what we would ideally want to have. Ten minutes allows for those seven-to-nine-minute transfers.
Got it, so it's the complication and the efficiency that we want to deal with, got it.
So the changes are transportation-based?
That that is, this is a direct in um result of our learnings of our transportation structure of this school year.
And is it just due to the limitations of transportation, Matt? Or is it just because it's not efficient?
Let's say we're doing, uh this, this makes it as efficient as we can be. The limitations are if we wanted to spend more money and go back to a different structure, uh we could look at that and we could have routes added that can provide more transportation at a higher cost.
But we are adding fifteen minutes of instruction.
For those first ones, and ten for the second group.
And ten for the second group, so that, so we are adding minutes of instruction, which is something we should be glad for. And that was a reflection of feedback you were getting from staff about, especially the implementation of literacy curriculum.
Yes, as is the next subject.
As is the next subject.
Illustrate as well.
All right.
Thank you, John, and the team.
I know it seems trivial to be talking about five or ten minutes, but I know the work that John and Dustin and the Transportation Department and our first student partners put into even those fine changes, so we appreciate that.
If I may, uh Madam Chair, Mona comes up. Um board members have heard um about, well, as Chair Nathan said, about the need for more time for interventions in literacy. And I know you've received some emails about an initial proposal to change the schedule of our special area classes, art, music, physical education, and media. Mona, uh in her capacity, as our still fairly new chief academic officer, has bitten this off uh and has grappled with the details in a pretty extraordinary way. Um I'm happy to say I think we've ended up in a better place than the initial proposal, which I'll let Mona describe. I realize I'm adding this to the agenda, it it, I believe it fits with the last discussion we had. But not because I believe that we necessarily will have all the time we need this late in the meeting to delve into all the implications, but because it's late in the school year and we do need to inform, in particular, our special area teachers about what their assignments are going to be for next year. I want the board to hear about this before that process goes into motion, uh literally tomorrow. This is not something that I'm asking for a board vote on, I believe it's fully within my responsibility as superintendent, but I want you to be very aware of the the complex change that uh we've landed on, so Mona.
Um this is something I was super, super excited about, because um when we, if you remember, when we met with, uh when we had the Witten Wisdom presentation, the classroom teacher that was here talked about the difficulty in the schedule. And I, at that time, said, we're working on it, we had been working on it, we finally landed. So um our goal was to create schedules that allowed for school-wide implementation of MTSS and also allowed for staff collaboration. And our current model for our specials area was art is forty-five minutes, the kids get that once every six days. And then media is thirty minutes a day, once every six-day cycle. And then PE and music is also thirty minutes, but it's twi, they're each twice every six-day cycle. So just from looking at the length of the class, you can tell, you could see, like, there's no way you can schedule them easily because they're not the same length of time. So the first thing we had to do was figure out, how do we get them all to be the same amount of time? And so this is, I've shared this with you guys before, this is a sample schedule, this is an actual third-grade schedule. I believe this might be from Jefferson. And each, so like three E is one of the third-grade classrooms, three L is a different classroom, and you can see where they are. I just showed four of the six days so that you could, I blew it up just so you could see it a little better. You can see, like, they don't always have, like, three S has media on A days at nine fifteen. But then they have music on B days at eight forty-five, so they don't even have the same time, like, the time slot. So if you're in that three S classroom, you don't have specials at the same time of day, every day. And that just gets to be, that's tricky for a teacher. And then when you're trying to schedule MTSS, what you really want is an open space for all the teachers at the same time. Because you want them to be able to share kids across the grade level. And so when you And so when you look across it, you can see the blue is the only time that is completely open for all of them, when they're, when the pink isn't taking up space. And we needed to clean that up, because that just, it's messy. It's just too hard. So what we landed on was, we kept the rotation the same, so art and media are both still once every six days, and PE and music are, will continue to be twice every six days, but we cleaned it all up and went to a 40-minute rotate, class period instead. And so this is now what it'll look like. That'll be the rotation. So they'll have, in the six days, they'll have media once, they'll have art once, they'll have, well, that actually looks like they have media three times. They won't. That one class won't have it three times, so I should have cleaned up my little picture there. But it'll be that clean, where they have the same, it's a rotation of, they'll have it at the exact same time period every single day, and then the blue then shows you, now it opens it up, you can have MTSS at any one of those periods.
And we are confident that this can be done within our contract with Rochester's Education Association.
Yes.
So that, we want to thank REA. I know that they have diverse perspectives in their membership, but we've worked, you know, closely with them, and we're going to keep listening to our teachers as we implement this. We know there always is transition in there. I'm grateful. I also want to be grateful to our art teachers in particular, who spoke up. I know there is a reduction of five minutes. That's different than 10, but I want them to know we hear that. And I think there may be some creative ways that we can engage our art teachers in working with kids outside the special time, special area time as well. So I'm enthused, I'm grateful to Mona and the team for where we've ended up in a very complex effort.
Yeah. Can I ask a silly question? Why are art and media only one per six days and PE and music? Is that a choice? Is it standards? How does that work?
So that is, that's something that has just been how it's done here. I don't think that that's something that has to remain. I think that's something we can look at as we move forward. I think for, I do think it's something we absolutely can and maybe should look at, especially as we look at the arts standards, like, it's, there's five areas for the arts, so it's not just, like, we often just said art, and now it's five areas. It's art, like, it's visual arts and music, and then there's theater, and it's just, it's a, I think there's other ways we can look at how we do it, but, but for this year, for sure, it's a bigger thing was getting the schedule right. I think the rest of it we can look at as we move forward in the next strategic plan, but that wasn't something that I think we needed to tackle necessarily this year. One thing.
And there's no change in, there's no loss of FDs?
No loss. Maybe a very slight increase, which we will account for in budget, but very slight.
Yeah, it's just a little bit.
Board members? Director Cook?
Well, I love it. You're all going to be waiting a really long time before you hear me not support something that's going to enable stronger supports for literacy and for all MTSS practices, so well done, and thank you.
This is patently, like, this was a heavy lift, and it's going to be so, so worth it, so worth it.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's move on to other business, 9.1, our ABCD. The current version of the ABCD is available for reference for every school board meeting, and beginning tonight, we're going to highlight the upcoming agenda items at the next two meetings for the community and board members, if you want to preview. At the May 6 regular meeting, our monitoring item will be budget development process update. We'll have Prep for Action of the 2026-27 school calendar, mindsets, behaviors, and experiences for student success, and the school resource officer contract. The two action items will be performance measures and the skip 2.0 process and the school's start times. May 13 study session, focus topic is the enrollment projection. Are there any items board members would like to raise for consideration for a future meeting agenda?
I do have a comment, though.
Sure.
I appreciate the fact that you are allowing the community to know in advance, though that information's always been there, but we're putting forth that additional effort. This is one of those innovative ways to ensure that the community is aware aptly, in ample time, to make preparation to attend, participate, educate, and inform oneself, so kudos to whoever came up with that. I know you probably did, Kathy, but I appreciate it.
How much I love the ABCD.
Yeah.
And I think a good clarification for the May 6 meeting is, since it looks like the board is going, is going to have a resolution on the school resource contract, officers contract, that would be an action item on May 6. We need to decide if it was going to be an action item by asking for a resolution, it's going to be an action item. Upcoming board meeting dates, all meetings start at 5:30. May 6 is a regular meeting, May 13 is a study session, May 20 is a regular meeting, and June 3 is a regular meeting. And hearing no other business, this meeting is adjourned at 9:25 PM.